I'm a little nervous, this is the first time.
Yep. So, so the next question is, do you know how to let somebody share their screen?
I think so.
Okay, very good.
I have some backup if I needed.
Very good.
And I, I only got tutorial today, so if I don't do a good job, it's only a reflection on Eric's teaching skill.
That'd be Eric Anderson, not Eric Wytetka. Hi Kevin, hi Ann.
Hey Jed, how are you?
Good, thank you. Hi Keith.
Hello.
Hi Hank, thanks for joining us tonight.
Just as a point of information, I'm not sure who will be writing the minutes, transcribing minutes from the tape, so. People are aware of that.
Okay, well if all else fails, you will be Jim, so.
Yeah, I'm saying it might be nice if people mention their names or something.
Okay, yep, very good.
Like, something like that. I did speak to Chris Bell and he'll be on the screen at some point.
That would be good. I was, there we go, okay. I see Lee Ann signing in now. It is seven o'clock and I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Next up on the agenda is the seating of alternates. And I see Ann Creme, Scott. Lee Ann, are you with us there yet?
Yes.
And Steve Nelson said he would not be here, and so. First up to be seated is Kevin. And Kevin, I don't recall, we are going to vote again tonight on. The opting out of the accessory dwelling unit regulations from Public Act 2129. And if you attended enough of those that you feel comfortable acting on that. I know we talked about it several times, but you'd missed a couple.
Yeah, I was gonna say I missed a couple sessions.
And if you don't.
I could, yeah, I, I don't say that I feel 100% comfortable on it.
Okay. Ann Blanchard, were you, have you sat in on enough of those that you would be comfortable acting on that?
No, unfortunately, I don't either. I was out last month when I think we talked about it quite a bit.
Okay, so, in that case, Kevin, I am going to seat you. When we get to that point, you can abstain if you so choose, and we'll go that way, but Kevin, you're the next up to be seated as an alternate, so. You are seated for Steve Nelson tonight.
Very good.
Next up on the agenda is additions or changes to the agenda. And is I, I think I emailed out to everybody over the weekend here, I would like to add. A new business, item 5A, which is a proposed driveway change to the Pine Ridge subdivision. Are there any other changes to the agenda that anybody thinks might be necessary?
Jed, this is Lee Ann, I'd like to add, unless you think we can do it under reports or something. An update on what we can do about a request for extending the 40 mile an hour speed limit down to the lake road regarding the Dollar General application, as you. All probably know, there's been a serious accident there just since our last meeting, so I'd like to discuss under some category. The notion that we've talked about several times about applying for an extension to the existing 40 mile an hour speed limit through the middle of town.
Okay, Lee Ann, I'd like to do that under item seven. Discussion on the agenda, and we'll put you first on the list there.
Okay.
Mr. Larson, you have the request from Grimaldi for the dissolution of Rosewood Estates, in addition to. Taking action on that, he had expressed an interest in getting some input on future development. Of the site from the commission, and I'm wondering if that could just be added, taken up at that, at that time.
We will take that up at that time, I thought, you know, when I was looking through, I thought we kind of covered that a little bit at the last meeting, but we can certainly. Do it again to see if we have, if anybody else has any thoughts for Mr. Grimaldi there, but we'll do that when we get to his item on the agenda.
Thank you.
So with that, there's only, I'll make a motion to add item 5A driveway change to Pine Ridge subdivision to the agenda. Can I have a second to that?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Ann. And. With that, any other discussion on the changes to the agenda? Hearing none, a call for a vote. Ann?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Lee Ann?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
And I vote I as well, the motion to change the agenda passes 5.00. Next up is public speak, anybody from the public here want to talk about any of the issues that are not on the agenda tonight?
I'd like to, I sent you a letter from. Yard RTC and the DTC asking you to reconsider something on the 15 feet. Side of the road for signs because. There are a lot of signs that are on, on the road that have been there all year long, they're the, I love teachers and that, and. You had trees cut down, or you had your roof done, or whatever, and they're all within the, right next to the road where we're being told we have to put ours. 15 feet back, and we want a little leeway because some people don't have that because of bushes and trees, they just have a driveway, and then that's it.
I understand, I did send the letter out to the commission, and I plan on addressing that on item nine of our agenda, which is correspondence.
Okay, I know you, I can't do anything more from that, I just wanted to make sure that you knew, they all knew that. We're concerned because I know the law changed that we can put them up earlier.
Yes.
And, but we have the rules that we have to have them down within one week after the election. Where there is no other, everybody else has these up. All the time, long time, you know, the little flags or something that has, you know, welcome or something, or like I said, the wood, or. Your kid graduated, or somebody, you know, had a birthday and they put them up, but they don't necessarily always take them down right away. And we've always known, even when we had the limit of only putting signs up one month prior to an election. Or referendum, we had to have them down within one week after, that was no and ifs or buts. And we, and I think the town of Andover, the RTC and DTC have always followed that. But two years ago, we were trying to put signs up for the residents and stuff, and. That's when all those signs about the, with the COVID was really up, and, you know, you. It was changed a little bit that we could put our signs up too, because there are so many of them, well, there's still up, and we're trying to, you know, inform people who to vote for.
I'll address that when we get to correspondence.
Okay, I'm gonna sign off because it's, you guys have all the business to do. I thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Any other public comment before we start? Okay, moving on to new business, first item up is. 5A, discuss driveway change for the Pine Ridge subdivision. And Eric, can you lead us through what it is that you're wanting to do?
Yeah, so, I am in the process of trying to sign in through my computer. And if you'll bear with me for a minute, I'll be on in just a few, and I can, I can share my screen and we can look at plans together, but I think I can start. With a little bit of background, can you guys hear me? Can everybody hear me fine?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, we're in approved, myself, my brother-in-law, George, have an approved subdivision application. And if you saw the latest, the version of the plans that were submitted and recorded as Mylars. What you would see are two lots, it's both, they're located between Pine Ridge Drive and Old Farms. Off of Hendy Road. My wife and my property ended up, you know, maintaining the address that the whole lot had, it was 14 acres, and. It was 26 Old Farms Road, my brother-in-law, George, he. His lot ended up being the other one, and the driveway entering from his side of the property. Which was new, you know, this was actually exist, an existing lot with a plan. And even a partially constructed driveway from, from Old Farms Road, he was going to, you know, his driveway plan was to enter from Pine Ridge. New entrance that, that was not constructed and also not part of any prior plan. So, what that plan would have reflected as far as. Utilities being introduced onto both properties was. Basically coming off of Pine Ridge, it would have gone, there would have been a transformer located on. My brother-in-law's side of the property, the Pine Ridge property, and then an extension going from his transformer out to our property. At the time that we had gotten approval for the plans and everything like that, we were already in discussion with. Eversource about. About the utility, the plan to bring utilities in. We had, we had basically been discussing, we have some email correspondence with them, even going, going back to the time that like. Prior to the subdivision plan, re-subdivision plan getting approved. Where we were showing them, all right, like, we're bringing utilities from Old Farms, or rather from Pine Ridge, and it will go over to the Old Farms property. As well, they had, you know, some of this is just my, my frustration that I'll, that you might pick up on, but like, you know, we had. Presented this to them, and even went so far as to like, kind of give us a little bit of a blessing, if not like. You know, we weren't at the point where they were doing real engineering. Plans, but we were trying to look for like a blessing because we were doing work on the driveway on the other side. And if they were going to require anything on the Old Farms side with respect to the. The, the introduction of the utilities, like, we wanted to know because we were doing driveway work, drainage, and then bringing in gravel and. And packing it down and everything like that, and if we were gonna do, we were gonna need to do some utilities work, we wanted them to, to give us. An idea of that as early as possible. So, we hadn't gotten anything from them, any indication that coming from Pine Ridge was going to be problematic. Not, that is not until a couple of months ago, I want to say June of this year, that their engineer. Basically said to us that like, they're, they were getting cold feet about coming from the other side, the main reason being that there was no. There was no driveway that they would be able to like pull one of their utility trucks on to. To access underground utilities if they needed to, to dig or excavate, or whatever they would need to do with the underground line and the conduit that goes. That the primaries would run through. And then it became a little bit more. They became a little bit more direct about it, they said. Without a driveway surface over here. The only way that we think, the only way that we're gonna be comfortable bringing. Electricity under the property is coming from Old Farms. So, you know, having, we really didn't like contemplate that scenario that much. At any point until they started saying, all right, let's, this is where we want it to come, to come from. Because it ensures that there's a surface that our truck will, that will be maintained, utilized, and then our truck will be able to. To access, but once we started sort of surveying the work that, that would be required. We, you know, could immediately tell that we were going to be running into boulders and slate alongside. The shared portion of the, the portion of the driveway that's already shared. With the, the property owners on the Old Farms side. And, you know, at one of the meetings, I think the, where we were public, where we did the public hearing. You know, they were on and they were, you know, making it known that. They, they just really want to make sure that their driveway, if it's damaged, gets replaced, right? We're, we're pretty confident that going alongside their driveway, there would just be, you know, putting a trench in beside it, there would just be. A really high probability that we're going to damage their driveway. And probably many, like several parts of it, and we'd be forced to have to repair that. But also in terms of impact, the, the trench that would run along that driveway would require us to. Take down, I'm gonna say about 20 trees. And then maybe upwards of half of them are actually in the upland, the upland review area of the wetlands. Side, the driveway over on the Old Farms side. And, and like I said, we'd be, you know, we'd be encountering ledge and, and large boulders and things like that, it would just be. A really, really expensive undertaking, and one that has, I think, you know, a lot of impact because of the, the tree removal. So, we, I asked the engineer who was on site with me, like, if, if it was possible to put a driveway in. That the town would approve of, we certainly would get. You know, you have, have an agreement between myself and my brother-in-law about, about utilizing the other driveway, but the idea is, can we extend a driveway off of his from Pine Ridge? And, and then run the utilities adjacent to that driveway. And there, you can see the drawing here, thank you Jim for pulling this thing up, I'm still, I am still on my phone. But, what has been added to the last draft, the last version, the approved version of the. Subdivision plan here is in pink, I think that's representing an area that we would need. A utility easement. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to zoom in a little bit to refresh my memory, because the plan isn't in front of me on my computer. But we would need, we would need a utility easement, we would need a mutual driveway easement, all of which I'm quite confident that we could get drawn up and recorded. To construct the driveway, we're, you know, we're passing through an area that is not. There's no wetlands or upland review area, we would probably need to do some grading, a little bit of grading to comply with slope regulations. And, and then we'd certainly have like the, the turnouts that were necessary. And if you compare the impact of putting the driveway in the utility trench in on this side to. What we would have to do on the other side, the impact is just pales in comparison, we're talking about a couple of, removing maybe a couple of trees. No more than 10, I think, to get this, to get this driveway in, but probably, probably more like five at the most. And then it would, it would go up into the areas, you see the red lines kind of indicating where the, where the driveway would go. And then a more of a dash line beside it to show the utility trench. So, I have, I purposefully waited a while until I heard back from. From the engineer at Eversource and presented him with a sketch of exactly what you're looking at here, and said, if this is, if this is in, would you approve? Of the utility plan to, to bring them in from Pine Ridge, and he did say, yes, he will. So. So that's the background in the story, and I, I mean, the green lines, I didn't mention them specifically, but the green lines have been overlaid since the. The Mylar version that's behind it to show, to show the grading. And, and I, I don't know, I don't think I'm leaving anything out here, but, you know, anything that's in color on this plan is something that. Is on a Mylar that's recorded in town and was part of the prior approval.
Okay, anything else, Eric?
No, I think that is it for now. Yeah, I think, I think that's it for now, I mean, I'm obviously available for questions.
Okay. Jim, do you have anything about this application you'd like to brief the commission on?
Yeah, I do, I, 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 you're pretty good at explaining it, I tried to point out that, the, the, I'm calling it purple, Eric called it pink, but. The reason that shaped that, like that is, it allows for grading as well as the easement, just in case anybody was wondering. I also want to point out that there is a. Turnout on the driveway about halfway through between. The lot, between the houses, turnaround for trap, vehicle traffic, vehicular traffic on that driveway. And that's about it.
Okay. So, Eric, we're, I'm, I'm assuming that there's no changes from what we had approved. On the initial driveway that was coming through the wetlands and going to. Your brother-in-law's house.
So yeah, there's no changes to that, it is actually, for the most part, constructed, we might. We might put a finishing material over the top of it if we, if we decided it was worth it, but at this point, I, I think we might be pulling the plug on working on it anymore. But I just, I don't intend to deconstruct anything that's there.
Okay, and I know you said that you would do whatever grading's required, and that's to keep it below the 10%, so you don't have to. To pave it, to pave the driveway extension?
Yeah, that's correct.
Have we had the fire marshal review or go out and look at the. The proposal for the new. Plan, and my concern is, it looks like it would make a, at least from the plan we had before, it would be a fairly sharp turn when you get to. To your house up there to, you know, intersect with the old driveway going into the garage. And I just want to make sure that, you know, the fire marshal's satisfied that he can get all his equipment in there and. And get turned around and get out.
I did not have the fire marshal review this plan.
Okay, I think that's a requirement that we do, and I think that. Is something that, you know, the applicant probably wants too, just to make sure that he's, for his safety.
Anything over 400.
I believe the regulation says it needs to turn around, I don't.
Yeah, it's all I did. It's a fire, fire apparatus turnaround.
Right, I'm saying it doesn't need a review, just as the show.
Well, if I look at section 4.9.4 Bravo. It requires a written report as to the rear lots from the fire marshal as to the feasibility of ready access. To the dwelling for emergency vehicles and equipment.
Okay, I can take care of that.
Yep, so I, I would like to get. That done. And it, and it does require, as you said, the turnaround, that was article 4.16. I, I believe. Just, one of the things that. Eric probably doesn't make much difference with respect to the driveway, but it was unusual to me that on. The lot where George is building his house, it says the utility easement is for your lot. And on your side of the property line is where it says the utility easement is for George's lot. And I know somebody tried to explain that to me once before, and it didn't take, and.
I think it's, the utility company just has some requirements for the, the width of these easements. Probably because it also grants them the ability to like, travel over the driveway surface or something like that, but. The, where the util, you know, the utility trench goes, you need a certain, they, they probably require a certain width, so. And it probably, and it must have exceeded the, the width of the, the property going down that little branch over there. So, both ways, like, he needed. He needed an easement, or I needed a recorded easement on my property for him to be able to have utilities go through this area. And likewise, I will need one for him to have my utilities travel through his area.
Okay. Do any of the other commission members have any questions for the applicant?
I do, Eric. The great, the other grading, was the grading the same as for the last time we approved the application?
Are you, are you talking about the grading on the other?
Yeah, the, the pink or purple, whatever it is, was that the same grading that was for the first approval?
Yeah, I mean, if it's not. If it's not in color, I mean, that's, that's what was on the first approval. What I'm trying to think about here, Scott, is, you know, we have that wetlands crossing. And there is grading work going into the wetlands area and then coming back out of it. So I, I think if you look at that. Through there a little bit, Andrew Bushnell, our engineer, is showing like the proposed grading. Right, so I think the dotted lines are the, what was there, and then there are some other lines that are really close to the pointer, just to the left, that are, that's showing. The, the grading work that is being done to come out of the wetlands area.
I see that. Green is all the proposed grading.
The green probably extends out of that a little bit. But the green is the new grading relative to what was.
So the, so the pink or purple was on the last application? Also, or is this new grading?
The green, yeah, the green is new grading, the pink was not on the drawing, but it's, you know, it's not a. It's not a, a grading item, right?
Yeah, that was just to indicate your utility easement, nothing with respect to grading, isn't that correct, Eric?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, up near your stockpile for your house, Eric, I, I checked the grade up there, it's gonna be around 15%. Right, right by that stockpile area, that's. Right, right by that stockpile area, that's.
Right.
You guys realize that it's going to be 15?
Yeah, so. Right. We, yeah, I mean, we, we know that area quite well. There is. What this, what the subdivision plan had on it and what you see on the. The side, in fact, right where the cursor is right now, right? There are some like, there are some changes with respect to like where the house is going to end up. And the, in the direction that it's going to face. In that area in there is getting, you know, is getting graded a little bit for the, for where the, you know, the house is going to end up. There are things that were not in like our conceptual subdivision plan. But they are going to be in like the building permit application and in, on an as-built. I can kind of describe what's happening here, that driveway would go literally right where it is, right by that stockpile. But the orientation of the house is actually. Parallel with those two, basically like those two driveway lines, the ones that are coming in from. That's coming in from old farms and the one that's going up from. From Pine Ridge, so the proposed house is kind of like turned this way and moved up to the, to where the driveway lines are.
So you twisted it like, it looks like 45 degrees or something?
Yeah, 90 degrees almost.
90, yeah.
Yep. It's, yeah, it's kind of.
Still, anything, you know, anything over 10, I think, has to be paved.
Yeah, absolutely. We would. You know, there is, there is like another grading plan that's getting submitted with the, with the building permit application that'll, you know, that'll show what's going on there.
Right.
There is a note on the original. And indicating that any driveway. Purpose in excess of 10 would be paid.
Okay, so, and, and how you getting utilities across? The easement, I know it's going to be underground and, and through the wetland area, where is it going to be down in the? Is it going to be in the wetlands or is it going to be supported in some manner or?
No, it won't be through wetlands. Oh, I'm sorry, down on the other side by.
On the Pine Ridge, right.
Yeah.
In the wetlands area, how is it going to be, how's it going to go through there?
So that was, you know, EverSource dictated what to do there. We thought we were going to go through the crossing that was being constructed. They requested it go, that it goes outside of the crossing. So it is going, if you're facing the property. From the cul-de-sac. It's going just beside the crossing that's being constructed, but on the left side of it, in, in the ground.
So it's going to be in the ground, whatever, four feet down through the wetlands?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, and another question, what's going to happen to the old driveway?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was kind of mentioning that earlier. I'm just. I don't exactly have a plan, I mean, there, there's an easement up there to use the leg of the driveway that's not really on the, on the drawing here. We've pretty much built this thing. And I just, you know, there's stabilization mat in it and layers of gravel and stuff, it, it's a, it's a. Finished surface and graded properly, you know, so that we're within. We're within the tolerances. I don't intend to deconstruct it. It's just. It is what it is for now and. I, I imagine we would probably not use it that much because it's a steeper entrance. We would probably prefer to enter the property from, from Pine Ridge.
Is, is Eric going to have to go back through wetlands to. Utilities through the wetlands again?
It should have been part of the original review. I can verify that.
I don't think we ever went over that.
Yes, I, I don't recall any discussions about that. I know we had the. Minor modification where we replaced the box culvert with a three-sided culvert. But I didn't recall any discussion on either commission of. Doing something different with utilities routing them through. The wetlands there.
No, because with the electrical. Electrical was always going to come in from old farms, so it never come, came up.
No, it's got, it was, the plan was always to bring them from, and I, I. You know, I bet you there's a, a line on here from the original approved plan that shows the utilities coming in from Pine Ridge. But. What might be different is I, I think we were kind of expecting to run it through the crossing area and EverSource. Dictated that it should not do that.
Right, they really pushed you in a corner there, huh?
Yeah, I mean. I mean, I guess I'm here again because I'm in a corner with them, but.
Right.
Yeah, so on, on the original. Drawings, it shows. Your proposed. Underground utilities in there and I can't. I can't. Looks like it was just to the right of the. The driveway portion. On the last, so. I would think. That might need a wetlands review. If we're doing something different there.
It was on the print, they must have approved it at one time, right?
Yeah, we did, we, it was approved for the utilities to go through, I think, you know, the plan. The, that we had was for the utilities to go, you know, run down the side of the driveway.
Right, yeah, remember something that was going to be home or something? Maybe, I don't know.
Well, and I know back at that time, we weren't, we weren't convinced, weren't convinced whether or not the utilities were going to be underground or. You know, strung on power poles. And so.
Yeah, that's, so I, I think we, we expected them to be underground by the time they got to the crossing, but it wasn't clear how many poles they would, they might want us to put off the street. I think early on, they were, they were saying at least one and now they've gotten, now they decided we can just run it down the pole that's there. So it would go directly underground from the pole that's out by the street.
Okay. Any other questions, Scott? Any other commissioners have any other questions?
No questions here.
Okay. Eric, I know you're already a little frustrated, you know, with this, the way, the way this is going out. I'm, I'm. Curious if we don't act on this until the next meeting. Or after we get the, the wetlands vote. How big a detriment to you is that?
I mean, that's, that's kind of what I budgeted for was, you know, presenting this here and then. You know, I guess I'm always planning for like not, not having all the information that everybody's looking to have until. We get some questions here. So if it was meet, next meeting before we acted, I, I think that's okay.
So the next, the next meeting, Jed.
Our next meeting is.
I mean, the wetlands meeting.
Oh, the next wetlands meeting is September. 12th, I think, it's, it's the. Second Tuesday because the first Monday is Labor Day. And so.
I guess.
Yeah, September 13th.
Yeah.
September 11th, I, I mean. Well, I think you were right.
Well, the 12th is, is a Monday and that'll be the Board of Selectmen meeting, so we put the inland wetlands on it. On the second Tuesday, if there's a holiday on the first Monday. So it'll be September 13th, I, I think that's going to be the date.
I think that's kind of a holdover from when meetings used to be live in, in the community room.
I. I don't know, all I know is that's, that's the date of it, that when we put out our calendar for the, the year, the start of the year. That's, that's where that's at, so you can check with Agent Wagner, but. But I'm pretty convinced is that. September 13th.
That's what's on the calendar, the town calendar.
And. In fact, you know, I'd already emailed George, I'm going to be out of town that particular day and, and so. I was asking him to find an alternate that could sit in for that meeting, but. But the, the things. Say again?
Do we need? Him to come back? Do we have any problems with this?
I think. When we don't have the wetlands. Resolved, we, we, there's, there's three or four things that I think we need on the. The drawing that was presented there that would make it. You know, and, and we could, we could vote to make them conditions of approval or we could have it come back, but I'm looking for. The wetlands understanding of, you know, how the utility is going to be routed. We'd like, I'd like to see a comment that the, the driveway would be graded to maintain a less than 10 degrees. The. On, on the, the new drawing that you gave us, Eric, it didn't have a revision update on it. Which. Should be whatever the date, you know, of the, of the drawing is that, that we act upon. And then. I looked through all the old stuff we had on, on this application and I never saw a drawing that. Showed the change to the three-sided culvert. Versus the four-sided box culvert. And so when I look at the, the drawing here, it still. References, I think, the four-sided box culvert, which is, is no longer the case. Now, those are all pretty straight, oh, and the fire marshal review. And again, you talked about that 90-degree turn. When it intersects the driveway up by your house, I just want to make sure that. The fire marshal is satisfied that he's got a turnaround area or, or he can do his things there.
Yeah, I just want to address one, one of those issues. I, when I was putting together a draft motion, I did realize there was no. Updated revision date on the plan and I, I spoke to, to Eric who in turn spoke to. The engineer who added it. It just came in after post, posting deadline. I had two other.
Yep, go ahead, Jim.
Issues that I, I rose that. Having the draft motion, which I realized, I understand you're not taking up the seating, but nonetheless, I thought I'd mention them and. One is I just wanted to see where the power transitions from overhead to underground. Because it's not shown on the plan and if the street number be addressed, meaning that. Both house, if both houses are served up Pine Ridge, they should have Pine Ridge street addresses. I wanted to put it in there just so. It's not lost somewhere.
Okay. So with, with all those issues. We can make a, somebody could make a motion that we approve the change. With all of those things, or we could have, you know, Eric come back, I think. I don't know if the wetlands can get through it that fast. I know for whatever reason, you know, and, and I don't understand the background behind it. Wetlands normally gets an application and then they, they wait till the next meeting, so you know, my. My concern there on Eric's behalf would be that, you know, they'll go to the meeting in, in September and. Don't act on it for 15 days and then we're into the October timeframe.
Would be good if he could get his digging done, done right now.
Yes, it would be, it, that was the ideal time and, and maybe if you go. I'm not sure, that's, that's a matter for Chairman Elliott and Agent Wagner to. To go through, but I think that if we were to act on this at our. September meeting, which is the week after, you know, six days after the. The, the wetlands, we could. We would be good to go and support Eric if he's got the rest of that stuff done at that point.
He could, he could dig most of the trenches, right? Right now? As long as he stays out of the wetlands in the review.
Well, he, he would be able to dig. Most of the trenches as, as long as. As long as we would approve. The plan for the driveway, I guess, tonight. Because I think the driveway, Eric, wouldn't the driveway in the trench be going in at the same time? Isn't that one action?
Yeah.
Is the, is the crossing in the driveway in yet?
Construction has begun. There is, the concrete culvert is there and some of the walls. That sort of, that contain the fill that's going to go inside of them, they're kind of like half constructed, he's going from Pine Ridge and working across.
So hearing nobody make, making a motion to act on it tonight. I would say that we would. Put off. Acting on the application until our next meeting. Which be, which would be September 19th.
Myself, I'm okay with having a motion now to have him do what he can. I'm just not sure how to phrase the motion.
I do have a draft motion, it does not include. The fire marshal review nor there was commenting on pavement, notation of pavement. But if you can, let's hear it. Tonight, I'd be happy to read it or it wasn't, it, it didn't appear, it was posted, but I believe it. Can't be read, it just not. Up on, on the screen.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. Patient George Carrera, Eric, let's say, let's go to 26 Old Farms Road. Moved to approve a modification of the subdivision slash special permit for two lot subdivision with common drive. Approved by, we have the commission on July 19th, 2021 and filed as maps 1134 through 1139. In over land records, recorded review with a revised plan dated 8/15/22. Following conditions, one, a revised map showing proposed changes and conditions be approved. And filed in the land records. Two, such Mylar shall be revised prior endorsement so as to depict transition from overhead to underground lecture utilities. Free street address of lot one be modified to reflect the revision. Or a revised driveway be provided by the applicant to be filed. To reflect the revision, easement shall be filed in land records along with the revised Mylar. Again, that does not include. fire marshal contingent of our contingent upon fire marshal approval of turnaround. Nor the, I, I wasn't quite clear with the pavement. I assume the pavement notation spoke to paving, paving it when it exceeded 10%, but I wasn't entirely clear about that.
Okay, but you could add that condition of approval that will be graded to maintain a slope less than 10%?
Yes.
And you could add a condition of approval, subject to fire marshal inspection and satisfactory report?
Fire marshal review, right?
Well, if you look at our regulations, it requires a written report is to each rear lot. So we need something in writing from the fire marshal that he is satisfied.
Right. I'm going to say report as opposed to an inspection. To me, in case that would be after the fact. Review is, is the term I'm using.
I'm, I'm still confused on, on the difference here. We want to hear back from the fire marshal that he agrees with the plan.
Okay.
And I think, you know, that, that condition would allow the applicant to, the opportunity to start doing an awful lot of work. He's just got to before all of a sudden done. He's got to, you know, take into account whatever the fire marshal says he needs to do, which I'm sure he's ready to do.
Subject to fire marshal approval. I, I was staying away from the term inspection because that implied that he would look at it after the installation.
Nope, I wanted, I want that discussion, you know, before it gets built up there.
And driveway shall be graded. Driveway slope shall not exceed 10%. Is that 10 degrees? Yeah, okay. And wetlands approval. At least, yes.
Well, I'm not sure that this application. The applicant's going to need to go to wetlands to get permission to dig the trench through what's already approved. This, this here doesn't really affect where the wetlands are. This is all outside of the wetlands. So we can approve this. He just needs to go back to wetlands to get permission to change the plan from whatever he had before to digging a ditch through the wetlands now. And and as you say, now's a good time to go dig a ditch. So we can, we can have that be a, a separate issue. We just need to follow it through to completion to make sure that, you know, it gets done, but.
Okay.
All right. Can I just chime in on the wetlands here? I, I did finally get my like computer going and I'm like staring at this plan a little more closely. I mean, the plan reflects the utilities outside of the footprint of the crossing, if I'm seeing it correctly. There is a passageway that the driveway is represented with, and then there's a line ashed with an E on it. And it's outside of the footprint of the crossing.
And you've shared that with us, Eric?
Yeah. Oh, Jim, you've got to allow me to, to share a screen.
Or Jim.
I think it will be the arrow above the share screen. Green button. There will be some options up there. Or, uh, okay.
Um, hold on.
Yeah, you're sharing, Jim. It's like.
Well, actually, I mean, Jim, if you want to in on the driveway uh, where it enters from Pine Ridge.
You want to share a different plan, am I correct?
No, no, this plan, this plan has it on it. Um, which I can, I mean, I can pull up the older one to prove, to prove that it's, uh, I'm referring to something old on the map. But if you zoom in on the crossing right in that area, where the, uh, yeah.
I think this is best I can do.
Okay. Jim, it actually might be on the participants. You might actually have likes. Oh, there you go.
I think it was just very slow and now it's, it's repopulating.
We gotta move that front a little bit.
I'm not sure where I can go from here to.
Jim, I've got a, I, I've got the approved, the plan from the approved application, right? Um, I can share that rather than this. If you can figure out how to let me share.
Okay, hold on one second.
No, I think I can do it now.
Yes.
Okay. So this is the plan. 1021, 2021, we made some revisions after conditions of approval. I believe the dotted line with the E here is for utilities. So if you follow this line in, this is the edge of the crossing, the, that would get constructed, elevating the driveway area up just above the, uh, you know, about five feet above the bottom of the um, the wetland area and the dotted line with the E is outside of that as it goes through.
You go to sheet four of that, Eric?
Sure. Good idea. So I guess here's that line. And the ease outside of it. I mean, I'm not mistaking the timeline of things with us and what we were thinking was going to happen. I mean.
Right. Erica shows right here that coming off a pole, E.
Yeah, right, right here.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the easement. Power easement. So it looks like it was approved.
Well, okay, so let's, uh, let's go to drawing six now. So this looks to me like the E line goes across the bridge.
Well, it's, it's not a, it's not a bridge here. It's just going underneath. You know, underground underneath the driveway surface through here, a little trench.
Okay, well, I would still ask you, Eric, to get with Agent Wagner and, and you figure out if we're good to go based on, on this drawing versus what you want to do.
Okay. We can do that. Okay.
Yeah. So I know Ann was willing to make a motion. Still willing to make a motion?
Yes.
And I think Agent Halcy read, read the proposed motion. We added a couple of things there. Anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. And Jim, can you read through the motion again, one more time? So we know what it is we're acting on?
Move to approve a modification to the subdivision slash special permit for a two lot subdivision with common drive approved by way of by way of commission. Um, planning commission on July 19th, 2021 and filed as maps 1134 through 1139 of the end of land records, according to with the revised plan dated 81522 the following conditions. One revised map showing proposed changes and conditions of approval be filed in the land records. Two, such mylar be revised prior to endorsement, so as to transition from overhead to underhead electric utilities. Three, the street address of lot one be modified to reflect the revision or revised driveway easement shall be provided by the applicant to reflect the revision easement shall be filed in the land records along the revised mylar. Five, fire marshal shall or let me start that over. The approval shall be contingent upon our marshal review and approval. And six, notation shall be added to state that pavement will be graded, graded to no greater than 10 degrees.
Okay, that's the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, a call for a vote. Ann?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes 500. And I think you're done, Eric. Please hear.
Thank you very much, guys. Certainly follow up here and get get everything done over the course of the next 30 days and we'll reach out to Joe for the utilities going through the wetlands. Really appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Okay, yep. Thanks, Eric.
Take care.
Next item up is old business 6A request for dissolution of the previously approved Rosewood acre subdivision located on Route 6, Route 87, Lint Holmes Corner. And
I'd be happy to introduce this.
Okay, yep, go ahead, Jim. And, and I, I think Kevin was not here when we, we showed the drawing the last time. So if we can either allow Keith to display that or you display that well, look at that as we, we talk about what we're trying to do.
Okay. All right, I'm having trouble calling it up. I will, I will get to that in a minute. Um, it's good.
Keith, are you ready to, to display that if we give you share screen?
I don't know how to do that, actually.
Okay, good, yep.
I'm new, I'm kind of new to Zoom, so.
I
I did supply all the drawings to Jim and I figured that out, so.
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have some help here. I was just gonna do a little background on, on the request here. This property, Rosewood Acres is situated at the corner of Route 6, Route 87 back in 12 or thereabouts, was approved as a I believe it was a 10 lot subdivision, several of which were commercial and the remaining lots were, were residential. And the applicant has
Okay, while you're working on that, is there anybody on the commission that did not see Keith Grimaldi's letter to Agent Halcy? And it's not a very long letter. I can read through it. You'll get the idea quickly. If you're not familiar with it, I can't remember if I sent this out or you had to go to the website and get it. I will take all that silence as the commission is familiar with the letter. Jim, I guess secure from trying to find the drawing? I don't know that it has that much to do with what, what we will be discussing with regards to this anyhow.
I lost the internet. I don't know when, when. Can you hear me now?
I can. I'm not sure that we're recording anything now.
It says recording.
It does say recording. Okay, yeah.
Good question though.
Anyhow, just talk to us, Jim, about what your, your thoughts on the application or the letter are.
Well, I'm simply sort of bringing date as far as future development. I know there's, you know, there is some commercially zone property there and it also, I believe is eligible. Um, it falls in the, the area that would be covered by, under the floating zone, section 26, I believe. So there's a lot of flexibility, what could, what could happen there. And Mr. Grimaldi was feedback. I know there's, was discussion about, you know, the need for affordable housing and potential use for this. I believe that at the last meeting or prior to that, he had, he was looking for a little input as to whether you were looking for, whether the commission, here's where it gets tricky with, you know, what the town is looking for or versus what the commission is looking for. I'd be two different things. The question was, are we talking multifamily, talking rental? Any guidance on that matter? Still with me?
Yeah.
All right.
So. So so as I recall, you know, we've got a section that was added to our plan of conservation development. And it's also is, as Jim mentioned, the, there's some words in our regs that that talk about this particular piece of property is being suited for a higher density housing thing, and I think that if we were to be able to figure out how to go about getting somebody excited about building some affordable workplace, senior housing in that area, that would be great, I think the commercial lots would, you know, if you were to you'd have to start someplace, but let's say that we could get a plan that would would get some higher density housing built in there. There's got to be all kinds of things that you could do with those commercial lots that would make it conducive to the the people living next to them to walk over and and do whatever business would be there, and I think that's very consistent with our affordable housing plan, our plan of conservation development, our incentive housing zones, all that stuff. So I think I think what you're trying to do is a good deal for the town when I initially started talking to Jim about this, if it were you know, a lot of times people combine two lots and it never comes to the commission. One of the things that we talked about when we were quitting the gazebos into the network the property out on Route six to the commission may by resolution permit the zoning enforcement officer to authorize minor non substantial deviations from the approved special permit. But substantial changes to special exemption, special permits shall be treated as new applications for approval and shall be submitted and acted on in accordance with these regulations. And so I think that that this is not a minor non substantial deviation, I think it probably is, I guess. What I what I don't recall, I recall your your drawing Keith and I recall your letter, I don't see anything that's an application there.
No, is it okay if I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so basically Jim has been very, very helpful in trying to get me to, you know, the point where I'm trying to direct what I you know, want to place the land and then look at the possibilities going forward, so the first and foremost is dissolve the subdivision that's currently on the piece because it's not viable, remove all of the restrictions that were placed on that subdivision going forward and being developed. And I'm basically bringing me back to zero, bringing me back to a raw piece of land that then I can now step back and think about in concert with the town plant planning and zoning, Jim has made it clear that just because planning zoning and and myself may think something is good for the town, that doesn't mean the town is thinks it's good, but something that's viable for the town and that would be received well by the town, mixed use, you know, some you know, some light, obviously Route six is is, you know, even though it's a quieter area, it's still a commercial spot. So you do a little light commercial, whether it's a Starbucks or a couple of offices or something that can service the houses behind it, like you just said, Commissioner. And then I'm open to, you know, I wasn't planning on developing this now, I thought it was just going to be a dead deal. But there's a a chance that given a, you know, a new climate in in building and and so on and so forth, that if we work together, maybe I can present something to the area that would be successful, it's not about what I want to build. It's not about maybe what you guys want to build, it's like what's going to really be advantageous, is it affordable housing, but what does that mean, I'm not, affordable housing to me used to mean $200,000 homes. Now, with given the 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 building climate, as everybody knows, affordable housing is like 275 for a for a small, you know, a small unit. That's just the the reality of of what it costs to build, so does that mean rental, does that mean owner owner occupied, does it mean mixed use? I need to know what, or I'd like to know what is acceptable to the town in a mixed use environment, and that's on a, this is on an informal basis, I'm not telling you to give me a plan. I'm just saying, what do we think would be successful in this area, it's it's a very popular spot for for the town of Andover and going through and going to Yukon or going wherever, so there, there, there are some options, it's just that, you know, I'm not from down there. I'm trying to get the, you know, try to get the pulse of what's of what's going on down there, what would be acceptable, because I don't want to overreach, that the last time I went through this whole process, it took me two years to get an approval for a plan that inevitably turned out to be not viable, the bore is not the same, the people are not the same, the the today's climate social now socio economically is not the same, so I don't want to be an adversary, I want to be, you know, you know, I'm trying to make some money, trying to provide something you know, a possible plan that works for everybody, so that's why I'm asking for the input of the people that are that live there and deal with this every day. So essentially I am going back to, I want to bring this this back to just a barrel lot of 59 acres and then like start and then move forward. That's what my plan is.
So would would that involve a combination of the ARD, the rural district and the the business district, I don't know whether you said you had some commercial lots, I don't know if they're business or industrial, or would you want to keep those separate?
They changed the zoning on my piece to to be mixed use residential like commercial to which to me means like retail, you know, office, coffee shop, whatever, that's the new R, the, you know, the R60 zoning on there and on top of the fact that it reduces my lot size, so if I put in a road, do I do lollipops for residential, do I do a front? It's obviously the front frontage on Route six and I have a DOT cut that that sits on 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 that property on Route six, so I have an ingress egress through Lint Holmes Corner, which is private and then also on Route six, I also have an 87 DOT cut which was not popular at all that they approved with the residents in that area, nor was my subdivision for that matter after so much, but anyway, I'm not really married to that anyway, I don't, the sightlines just barely made it, but yes, the state gave it to me, but I I would relinquish that, I don't really think I need to be there because the majority of the wetlands on that property are running up and down 87 where I where I butt Columbia, so I would prefer to stay away from controversial things and go to what's, I got plenty of land there to work with, you know.
I, so, so I didn't come prepared to address, you know, in detail the, probably the detail that you're looking for. I'd have to go back and review through the mixed use regs, you know, we've not done anything with mixed use so far with the floating zone. I, I would say that I think what you're trying to do is consistent with the direction housing is going today. It's it's probably, you know, not as strongly built as our affordable housing plan worded it in the plan of conservation and development, which is 10 years old, we're just getting ready to start doing, you know, working on the next one coming out in 2025. But I think in and I will give the other commissioners an opportunity to talk in just a minute here, but I think, you know, it sounds like you're looking for the win win answer, it's good for the town. Good for you and you know, the town means both, you know, the town organization and the town people, and I think there's a lot of stuff out there that goes into that and I am personally in favor of all that stuff, and so at this point, I'll let other people give their two cents on that, whoever wants to. Anybody else?
Favor of it.
Um, I think this got some good possibilities. And this fall, I understand that Yukon has got a class of students that's going to be working with us and helping to come up with some plans for the town and future development, and maybe they can have some ideas also about this area that on Route six.
That might That's a great idea, yeah, yep, I I know we're trying to, you know, we're trying to give them the freedom to go out and see what it is that needs to be done, but if we were to float this idea by them and say this would really help the town, you know, that might be one that we could guide them towards.
Right, you would have to give them a copy of our regulations.
Yep, and they should, yeah, have, they've got the plan of conservation development, they've got the portable housing plan. You know, the set of housing plan which specifically addresses this area is on on the website there in our regulations and so forth, so.
That when we're making the those new regulations, I think that this parcel came up as
It did, yep.
A good candidate for cluster housing, I thought.
Right, and so and then just to go back, you know, on affordable housing, what what does that mean, and that means that you can have I think it's 70% of the housing at market rate, which is whatever you wants to go, and I think it's 30% that have to be affordable and that's, you know, 80% of the median income, which, you know, is what you were saying about you know, 275 might even be up to 300,000 now with the way inflation's going out there, so. But but I think I think there's a lot of people that are looking for smaller lots, smaller houses and and I think Andover needs that, so.
Commissioner, does that, does that include, I I'm not sure if you addressed that, maybe I missed it, but can you do mixed ownership and rental on the on the same subdivision? Is that included under the under the regs for affordable housing? And and would you and would you want that or no?
I, at this point, not smart enough on there, we put together a plan, it's been fairly you know, we haven't gotten well downrange on that plan yet, but it does give us an awful lot of flexibility to do different things, I, the only, the only one that I am familiar with is a division that's being looked at in Colchester. And I saw the, you know, the the public notice in the newspaper that said, we're building this this subdivision, there's going to be this many units designated affordable, if you think you meet the income requirements, call this person and and we'll start taking applications, so that was all for for sale. The rental ones, you know, I think you're getting into the, the quasi public agencies, kind of like, you know, what's the Riverview and and they manage those for you and and they would be the developer come in as a public entity and and develop it to rent it out with some assistance and that sort of thing, so I don't think you mix those two together, I think it could be either or, I think you've got enough land there that you could have some of each, but whatever chunk is going to go, it's going to go either, you know, rental through some organization or or private sale with a given number of those being designated affordable.
Yeah, Jim and I had a discussion at length about what the optics and psychology might be behind trying to mix you know, renters with owners. And this is just again off the cuff, off the record or whatever, but you know, the owners might not want to be around renters because of a preconceived notion that well, they're not going to take care of their property because we are, so I wouldn't want to put myself behind the eight ball already in the beginning by trying to you know, throw something out there or market something that that's that's already 50% on a losing side, you know what I mean, so.
I would recommend that you you get a hold of, you know, it find the, the next step would be to find a developer who who does this sort of thing and get their input.
But yeah. Well, I I'm already, I'm already reaching out to them.
Okay.
I would be the developer, so, but again, essentially, just not to I'm trying to go backwards here a little bit, but obviously the first step here is to to get to move forward with what Jim proposed to you on my behalf, which is to strip this back to a piece of raw land, so then I I can just bring ideas to you and I'm not beholden to what this past you know, approval is is is, because there's so many conditions on this piece of land that that don't matter anymore. But I want it to be that going forward, I'm not going to stumble on something that might have been left behind to 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 bring you a a new you know, project, I guess you could say, so that's that's the whole idea, and again, we're we're going through this and if I have to come to three meetings in a row to say in front of you, well, actually, I'm not coming, are we ever going to get back to in person or what? So like, how do I show a plan, I'm not, you know, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to hire some, the guy before me so he can show the plans.
If we get a plan, we'll put it online in between Jim and I, we'll figure out how to
Yeah, so I mean, essentially, I want to start from scratch again, and then if I have to go to two, three meetings in a row and say, look, if I came up with this idea, I came up with this idea. What do we think, I don't want to spend 75 to 80,000 dollars for every engineering plan that's going to get shot down, I want to be, I want to work in concert with you guys, you know, so.
Jim, is Jim Halcy, is there a, like a eight for when wetlands have to be re redone, could he use his old wetlands map for that? I believe five years is the
I'm done there.
Yeah, five years. I believe it's the longest.
I have topographies, I've got soils, I've got well placements, I've got all that, so that means none of that's not any good anymore, but you know what? To be honest with you, that was six, seven, eight, nine acre lots, and now we're going to be going to maybe lollipops cluster like like Scott said, so it's going to have to all be redone anyway, and I want, it would have to be fresh and because why would we want to start with a plan that relies on something from 10 years ago that says, oh, well, maybe the land shift, you know what I mean, it should probably just be all brand new.
You can probably start your plan with the old wetlands information.
Yeah. Yeah. This is going to be close. That's probably not changed, but you know, I mean, again, the property is known. Obviously, as you guys know, that it was an old gravel pit, so it's great that a lot of the natural resources I need to develop the thing and to 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 do roads and stuff is already there. So that that's kind of, that's kind of good to know, the elevations haven't changed, you know, so there, there's some starting stuff that is still safe, you know.
Okay, Jim, is it so my my thoughts are that we should get you know, an application form filled in is trivial as that might seem. I know you had some discussions with Keith about, you know, an A2 plan that shows, you know, the outline. And and he expressed a concern about he didn't want to spend a lot of money, and I understand that, until he has a feeling that that we're all kind of in favor of it. I have not heard any of the commissioners voice anything that that sounds like it's a concern with what you're looking at, Keith. And so I'm thinking you fill out this five minute form with Jim, we look at it at the next meeting, we should be able to vote with a condition of approval that you do the A2 plan that shows what you've got and we get rid of all those previous conditions of approval, which Jim's gone through and said, yeah, none of them are really you know, there's, there's nothing in there that is going to be hurt by going back to one big lot and and we could be done at the next meeting.
That sounds great.
Yeah, I I didn't ask Mr. Grimaldi for an application because I didn't, I didn't see it as a didn't think our existing application addressed dissolution, but but there's, there's no reason it couldn't be used.
It might not, I just, you know, when I, I was still wrestling with the issue, Jim, of why does it need to come to the commission and and it was a, you know, it was an approved subdivision before. Why does it need to come to the commission? And, and it was a, you know, it was an approved subdivision before. This is how you modify it. This is certainly a big modification to that original subdivision. And so that's. The cleanest way to have an application in, it sounds pretty simple.
Yeah, by my way of thinking, um, yeah, it is the cleanest way. And. I'd be asking you to sign it as chairman, good. Okay, for you to do that. Obviously. You know, you'd need the commission approval. It, it, but I did it administratively. I'm not suggesting. You know, it has no. Could show up in the, in the land records, you know.
No, doesn't.
Trying to clean it up. You had said if, if there wasn't, if it wasn't substantial, to be that effect. So that's why I'm suggesting the route that I am.
Okay. Well, maybe you and I need to talk offline here and we'll, we'll look at, it would seem that Mr. Grimaldi would sign the application, not me, but.
You know, I'm, I'm saying the, the plan, that's the application.
Absolutely.
Ultimately, he's looking for a Mylar in the land. It shows this as one parcel of land. That's his goal.
And I would be the guy to sign that. Yes.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, can I ask you another question? So. Do you, is there online? Do you have, you, you mentioned a couple of times about your, there, is there actually affordable housing like? Uh, not on requirement statutes or what? Like, how would I go about that? Because you said that that would, the town would. Look favorably upon that. Is there somewhere I go to look to see?
And Jim can get you there. Okay. So there's. We had a, you know, a public meeting where I presented the plan, gave the, you know, PowerPoint presentation, talked about it for. Thirty, forty minutes. And then there's also, you know, the written plan itself, which I think is very readable. And that's online. You can take a look at, and I think in there you'll see that your property is specifically addressed as one of the, you know, opportunities that the town has.
Is that, now, does that, um, would, would that be considered again, on the favorable side? A mixed use scenario where you have affordable housing and then some nice, you know, light commercial in the front on the road front?
I, I, I would have to go do a little more homework before I could address that issue and specifically look at our mixed use regulation. Okay. I, I'm not that familiar with it because we haven't had to deal with it yet.
Okay. So, and I'll, one more question I'll ask once again, just to reiterate. So. If I came up with an idea. Um, for a mixed use, affordable housing slash light commercial. And came in front of the, and, and, and put myself on the agenda and said. Before I again, spend, you know, eighty, a hundred thousand dollars in engineering a plant, how does this seem? That it might be looked upon by the board? I mean, is that something you guys can comment on or am I not?
It is. And it. Very much. In fact, that's the way our. Our process is supposed to work. You tell us what you'd like to do. We, we give you some thoughts. And get with your, with an engineer and he drafts up the, the big plan and we start.
You know how much the engineering costs are in these things. It's like, I would not want to come in with a buy, with, with a, with a plan that's not viable. And then, you know, you just.
Yep. And that would give us the opportunity to study up on that mixed use. Uh, section of our, our regs before you came to talk to us. So we're all a little smarter on it.
Okay, great. That works out good.
Okay.
All right. Are we good?
I think, I think that does us for tonight there.
Okay. Jim, I will reach out to you and we'll do what we have to do paper wise. I thank everybody on the board for listening. And we'll probably be, be working together some more.
Thank you, Keith.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item up on the agenda is the gravel pit restoration plan. And I, I got a letter today. That probably. Well. I think. Jim, can you get me to share my screen? And I can even post this thing up here because that's the one that's.
Yes.
That's. Okay, so here's. Here is what we got from Agent Wagner, who in concert with Chairman Elliott, you know, came to our site walk. And essentially says that based on the presentation at Site Walk Restoration Plan submitted by Chris Bell. Is appropriate for the site conditions and that the wetlands will be adequately protected by the restoration plan. Enough of a buffer between the disturbed area of the gravel pit and the wetlands and the soils at the site drain well enough so that any runoff should infiltrate. Long before it reaches any wetlands. Chairman Elliott also would like to comment that the original topography of the site resulted in runoff towards the wetland. Restoration plan therefore doesn't result in any additional runoff. And in fact, because the slope is reduced, the soil is so permeable. Runoff will probably be substantially reduced. So. That's, that was the. Wetlands input. That we had gotten. Which I guess. Is, is good for addressing the thoughts of the. The wetlands. I was hoping for a little insight into. How to slope the property with respect to. The neighbor Ms. Hutchinson desires and. But that didn't touch on that. So I guess we're on our own a little bit. I. I think it is safe to say that. And, and I'll give Ms. Hutchinson the opportunity to tell me if I'm wrong, but, but her position since, you know, we've started discussions has been that. She would, she thinks that we should have no runoff from this property. Onto her property. Regardless of whether or not we had runoff in the past. Is that, is that essentially your understanding, Ms. Hutchinson? Hey.
Um.
Maybe.
I think I'm probably muting her.
Well, I see that she, she is muted. But most other folks are too.
Can you unmute her?
Jim, yeah, I think it has something to do with the shirt.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I speak?
Certainly.
Okay. Uh, this is Chris Bell representing the applicant. Um, his engineer. Um. I, I took into account everyone's concern at the field meeting. And. I briefly, just before this meeting, uh, changed and. The plan to, uh, address those concerns. Um. We, we don't, the, the owner doesn't care how it's graded, as long as he can get it restored.
Yep.
Um, so he said, you know. Grade it to, to what people would want to have. And so I made up a plan to, uh, well, Mr. Chairman, as, as we were leaving, you said, uh, well, you know, Chris, you can grade it flat or you can. Uh, put a, grade it towards the middle like a basin. Uh, that would both be acceptable. So. What I did is make a plan before I show it here. Um. I'm just making, uh, high points. Where before I was sloping towards.
I have kept it.
The left and right, I, I made a high point and basically made the center of. The property instead of a high point, I made it a low point. And so I'm. Kind of sloping everything towards the middle. Um. Which basically gives me a big giant detention area. Um. And what I will do is make. The berm that's on the left side. Towards the auto parts. I'll make that a little bit lower. So. In case. By chance, we get, you know. A deluge that's, you know, five hundred year storm. Any water would go towards the left, towards the auto parts and grade down, you know, eventually go towards the river, which does now. Um, and I, if I have your permission, I can put that plan up and we can take a look at it.
Wonderful. Please do.
Okay. Oh, we're up.
Um, while he's putting it up, I think I'm un muted now. Is that correct?
Yep, I can hear you. Yeah.
Okay.
How do I get to it? I don't know. Um. Doesn't look familiar.
There should be along the bottom of your screen when you move the mouse, where it says mute, stop video and all that, something in green that says share screen.
Yeah, I hit that, but I'm. Trying to, I hit files, but I don't get anything here. Let me try this again. Cannot start. Oh.
No.
Yeah. I can't start the share screen while another participant is sharing.
Hold on one second, please. Chris, can you try again?
I'm trying to, uh. Trying to get to my file. I don't know how to get to it.
Okay.
It's not as easy as it was last time.
As I can tell, you should be able to share it. I mean, you retrieve it.
Yeah.
There we go. Uh, can we see that?
Well, you need to, I can see restoration plan eight fifteen twenty-two, but you need to click on it to call it up, maybe.
Open it up, yeah.
Um, I did.
Okay. No, we're not seeing it.
How about if I try it?
Right again. Well, you don't have it.
Yeah, you're right. Okay.
I just, because I just made it.
Yeah, so.
I forgot.
You got it yet? No?
I think you need to have that plan open, Chris, before you share your screen.
Um. Really? Okay. Uh, last time I just went for the file.
Okay, yeah, I.
Open the plan and share the screen.
Okay. Oh, I, I, I see what you're saying. Now we have to get back to you. Um. See it now?
Oh, yeah, now we're getting close. If you could blow it up just a little bit, that would be helpful.
Uh, participants can now see your screen. Okay. All right. Um. How's that?
It would be even better if it was bigger, but we can do.
Well. Um, I don't know if my screen can get any bigger.
Okay.
Just, just take that window and drag it to the top of the screen.
There.
Take the whole Adobe window and just drag it to the top of the screen. It'll snap the full size.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
I can't seem to get it much bigger here.
I think, I think we can do with what you got there now, Chris. Yep.
Okay. Um. Basically what I did is. Where this was the high point and I went. Either side of it. Uh, I made this a low point and. Let me get, there we go. And I. And this is basically a, a high point across here. And a high point across here. Uh, this still gets filled in. That's the basin. And basically I'm coming in at ninety-six. About where elevation ninety-six was and is, you know, I can't fill towards the right of this night of these spot shots because that's filling into the floodplain. So. Basically this whole area. Um. I'm going to make. Two ninety-six, which it is about now. Uh, and it is about that here. Um, I think I got to build this up a little bit here. It's around nine, two ninety-five, I guess. And I'll make this a low point. And what will happen is in the same thing from the road here, this, this whole area. I probably should have a big, big circle about will be a, a pond area. Okay. It'll be low. It'll be depressed. And. And that's for the water that flows directly on it. So anything from this point to the right. Is going to stay at the same elevation as it is now and never was before. Uh, but as you, we proceed to the left. Uh, it's going, the elevation is going to go down and come back up. And then I'll make this side a little bit lower. Couple of tenths lower than this side. So in case. This big giant area of, of a pond, which is only going to be six inches, six, eight inches deep. It'll be bigger or about the same size as this area here. I went through some quick calculations. And this was around five hundred cubic feet. And this is like about four hundred and ninety plus cubic feet. You know, it's about the same. And. If the water ever gets above this berm here, it'll go towards. The right. And then. As you can see, the way the contours are, it'll hit elevation. Uh, around here is, is two ninety-four where the benchmark is. That's at grade. And. Go down to two ninety and it adds towards the river. Um, in this direction, heads all the way down towards the river. This two ninety-four is the flood elevation. It's not an elevation that's out there now. That's, that's the flood elevation. So. Um. This prevents. All the water. That currently. Could go towards the right. It's, it's going to drive it to the left. But I, I can't fill across the access road to make. It go all the way. Over from the edge of the property because I'd be, I can't fill into a flood plain. This is elevation two ninety. And the flood is two ninety-four. That, that would be against the law to fill the. Access driveway. I can't. Grade it towards the back because this whole area. Is a couple of feet higher. Than two ninety-six is actually up. Two ninety-eight, you know, up, up to three hundred two here. So this, this is the nesting area, which. This has been all restored, just waiting for the shrubs. And this whole area is all restored except for the top zone there. So this is all final grade. Um. We can. Basically. Home this out a little bit here to make sure it flows. Into the low point. Where that's grassed right now. Not much grass here right now. So. This would just. Probably to be the best for everybody's concern. And it doesn't really affect the property owner because. Whoever gets the property or the future developer will have a grading plan. That is going to. Have a lot of asphalt in it probably and you'll have to get. To catch basins and then go to a. Well, water separator and then, you know, to a detention area. So. That'll all have to be designed later, but at this point. All the water will be basically retained on site. Unless it gets to like, you know, way beyond a hundred year storm or five hundred year storm and. You know, the, the ground is frozen and everything else, but you know, basically. It's all going to stay. On this property. And anything that runs off will go towards. The left. So. That's basically it. Um. And of course, well, all the other notes are. Still here. Um. We still. This. Conveyance challenge is, it's already filled in because it's not being used anymore. Um. The level spreader is still. Is projected to remain because it's basically just some rocks on the ground. Uh, pressed into the soil. And. You know, you have to go there and actually find it there because it's all covered with pretty heavy growth right now. The pipe will be taken out. Uh, the truck turnout area will stay because that's just a little bit of grading there. Uh. And the tension bond will. Get filled in. And, uh. Anti-track pad will remain, which it should. For any, again, it's just stone on the ground. And, uh, pine trees will get. Planted and. The construction fence that's across there with the security gate is, except to the owner, if he wants to keep it up, he'll probably keep it up. I want to leave it as his option. Uh, to just, uh, control the site so people don't come driving in. And actually it should have it. So, uh, you know, bikers are. So, uh, you know, bikers are. You know, um, doom bug, not doom buggies, but you know, riders, motorcyclists and don't come in four-wheelers to disrupt the property. He's plans to put some barriers across all this entrance, so nobody can get in. Um, once this is all restored, so and then he can take the fence down, but that's basically it.
Okay. Um, Hank Gruner, you've sat through an awful lot of meeting here tonight, uh. And I appreciate that, uh. You, based on your participation in the sidewalk and in what you've heard tonight, do you have any, uh, your thoughts for us?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, uh, no, uh. Uh, I don't see any concerns, you know, you know, the, all of the back areas remaining as it is, you know, except for the shrubs going in, so. Um, that's not a problem.
Okay. Very good, um. Might not be appropriate, but let me ask Ms. Hutchinson what you think.
Okay, am I successfully unmuted?
You bet.
Okay, good. Toward the front. It says proposed low, low point down there. And then you show a two ninety-eight and a two ninety-five, what about from there to the road?
I'm looking for the two ninety-eight.
Um. I'm sorry, two ninety-six, on the, the second set of arrows up.
Yeah, yeah.
On the propose, okay, it's two ninety-six there, what I'm referring to. Excuse me, between there and the road, in other words, your proposed low point line kind of ends.
Right.
And what about?
You can see.
And then it's two ninety-six down here near the road, what, what happens here where it ends?
You see the three arrows, like, one to the left, one to the right, and then one below?
Yes.
Well, that's the intention like, like the end of the berm, like there'll be an end. And the water will basically. Uh. The intention is, is from that arrow that's in the middle, as it goes towards the bottom of the page, it's like it berms up to ninety-six. Um, you know, the pro, proposal point is like two ninety-five and a half, all the way to the back, all the way to the front. And then it ends, and then we go back up to two ninety-six, so that, um. All the water is there. Uh, then it ends, you know, like in a pond there, like opposite where the.
Now, are you referring to the berm as the mound of, uh, soil that's ar, already there?
No, no, that, that whole area has to get regraded, that's, that material.
That's what I thought, yeah.
That's about twenty feet up, yeah.
What, what is that then? What is, when you're proposing, because that's higher now, that's back up to two ninety-six.
That's about twenty feet higher. Um, that's why I hatched that, and you see the hatched area? That's the, that's the area that's remained that hasn't been touched, that's like the original grade, that's way up in the air. We have to use that material to do the grading for the rest of the property, because it's. As we head back from station two, as it goes to the back. There's all kinds of bumps and low points there, especially, uh, right along the silt fence, uh, there's a hole there. Which shouldn't be there, um.
Is that gonna be filled, Chris?
Yeah, that's, that's, it's gonna get graded back up to be above the floodplain, it's like. It's at the floodplain now, and it should have been a foot. The intention is to be at least a foot above the floodplain and more for the property. And if I make it flat across, I'm, I'm not gonna get a foot above the flood. If I berm it this way, I, I should have no problem being above the foot plane, a foot above the floodplain everywhere, if not more. The idea is to get more than that, um. And I want to make sure there's enough material to do that, and that whole hatched area, yeah, that's all I gotta come down to. The grades, as I'm saying, um. You know, two ninety-six or higher, uh, and then have that grade down. To the upper part of the drawing, row down to the low point, so there's not gonna be any water heading towards the road, except for what's there now. Um, by the access, uh, the old access area that's right here. This, this grade over here, this, this hasn't changed right here in this area, and that's all original. But it starts picking up very quickly as we come up here, this is up to elevation. Oh, um. Three ten, probably if not more, uh, I think.
But you're removing.
That's, yeah, it is about three, two ten. Eight, three, maybe three oh six.
He's removing that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're removing that hatched area.
Well, yeah, this, this is still raw up here, it's, uh, we, we stopped him from grading, because. I said, hey, we're gonna run out of material to finish this job, once I took some shots out, and I said, you know, you gotta grade this properly, so. So this, all this material is gonna get pulled down and be nice and flat, and then go down in this direction. Proceed to be, you know, uh, like a bottom of a pond and, you know, uh. Be like a little depression right along this whole area here.
But I guess my question is, is that, does that extend down to the. Area close to Route Six? Because it, right now, you say, it says two ninety-six.
Yeah. Well, this elevation right here is two ninety-two.
Yeah.
That's two ninety-four, that is two ninety-six, right there, this contour. So, nine, two ninety-six goes right through here, it's right here, so. This is two ninety-eight, three hundred, three oh two. So this is about six feet higher than what we want, we're gonna level this off, the two ninety-six right here.
To what level?
Two ninety-six. Right there, see that, that all, that's a proposed elevation, it's two ninety-six here. We're gonna bring this down from three oh two to two ninety-six, and then head down to two ninety-five and a half. And this will be all low, so, you know, there's. You know, the same grade that's here now is, is gonna stay there. With this, this whole area has not been touched, but this, you know, we're gonna be at. Two ninety-four, two ninety-two here, so from here back, we're gonna start grading it down to two ninety-six. And then down to two ninety-five and a half, same with over here, it's gonna get graded down, and everything will be towards this low point.
That was my question, in other words, the lower your low point is going to continue beyond where you have it now.
Uh, well, um, yeah, maybe to the tip of this arrow, you know, it's like. It's gonna from two ninety-six to two ninety-five to here, so, you know, it's gonna be gradual.
But, but it's only two ninety-five point eight, so it's gonna, this goes slightly down, Chris, right?
Well, here's two ninety-five and, and point five, this is two ninety-five and eight, the intention to lower this is the.
Right.
If, if this overfills, it's gonna go that way, okay? It's gonna head that way, if this overfills here, it's gonna go that way. It's gonna go that. If this overfills, it's not gonna go this way, it can't go towards the road, because this is lower here, gravity is. It's gonna go in the downhill, so it's gonna go that way.
What's going to keep it from that two ninety-six level flowing to the right toward my land?
Two ninety-six.
Yeah.
Two ninety-six will be all along here, two ninety-five and a half here, and then lower than two ninety-six here, so if the water builds up. And wants to go that way, you can't, because it's gonna go that way, so water goes downhill, it's gonna go that.
I, I understand that, but my point being is you show the majority of that area. As being at two ninety-six as opposed to going down where the arrow pointed toward the river. Um, that you, your proposed low point of under two ninety-six isn't indicated.
I have no idea what you just said.
Well.
I, I don't understand.
Okay. Let me, uh, let me take a shot here, in. So over on the left-hand side of the drawing, the highest elevation I see is two ninety-five point eight.
Yeah. Correct.
On the right-hand side. I see an elevation line of two ninety-six, so the left hand is a little bit lower than that right hand. Which is what we were asking for, and so it should not ever. Go over and start flowing down towards your property, Ms. Hutchinson, because it will prior to getting up to two ninety-six. Flow over the two ninety-five point eight on the left-hand side and go down towards the, uh. The river on the extra mark side of the property.
My concern being the piece that between there and the road, it's going to be at two ninety-six. So the water isn't going to be able to flow. In that direction.
Which direction?
Where, where is the water going to flow that lands on that. Area to the left. That area, yeah.
I actually would put another arrow. Not a hundred and eighty degrees, so go, go that way, because that's, that's where it's naturally going now, and you know, we're not gonna. Touch this, it's like, once we get to two ninety-six, we're gonna go that way, we're gonna go towards the back. So whatever tiny bit is here, it's gonna stay that way, and yeah, it's gonna go towards the road, which the way it goes now. And all this water from this entire area. Is gonna be detained here, and if anything goes anywhere, it's gonna go to the left, it's not gonna go towards the road. This whole area drains to the left, not towards the road. And the, the part that drains towards the road now. This small tiny area that remains, well, you know, it's, it's, it doesn't actually drain towards the, it drains that way, but then it. Eventually just runs down this way and goes along the property lining out, like the way it does now. But that, that's just this little tiny area, I, I can't. Build this up, because it's in a floodplain, I can't build this up to make it go that way, because that's filling in a floodplain, I can't do that. So it's gotta remain where it is.
What is the level, excuse me, between the, um, and, and the road, right in through there?
This is, right now, this is three oh two, three hundred. Two ninety-eight, two ninety-six, two ninety-four, two ninety-two, and then it goes up. As it goes up to the road, the road is up here at, um. Around, uh. It shows to be two ninety-two, but actually it's a lot higher than that. This, this contours and that.
And what is the level as you go southeast?
What's that?
What, what's the level as you go along Route Six to the southeast?
The most I go up.
Elevation.
Elevation.
Well, all these are in, all these elevations are two ninety-two, two ninety. And it drops to two eighty-eight, and these are all in the floodplain. This, this is all in floodplain right now. It's gonna stay that way, we only added this area here, so we could get off the road, because we couldn't put the access here, we. The town ordered us to put it here, and so we had to fill a little bit in order to get in and, and down, had to make a ramp here. And they're not gonna allow the entrance to stay here, so that's, the entrance has to stay there, which. It's gonna be there. But since we lowered this area a little bit, we, because we, if we put fill in a floodplain, we have to take some out, so we took this area out. To balance that, and actually there's a little bit more taken out of here, so. There's no violation, no, you know, you have to. If you wanna pay Paul, you gotta rob Peter, you know, it's like, you know. Add some here, you gotta take some out, that's. Okay to do that.
Hey, do any of the other commission members have any questions or comments on the plan?
Oh, um. Mr. Chairman, I have another, uh, comment.
Okay.
To do with the level spreader and the swale. Um. Perhaps Mr. Halcy could help out.
Sure.
It has to do with the, um, approval of the plan and the conditions of the original plan.
Okay, going back to the original, well, the approval process, that level spreader. Was shown over the, the building line, um, the building setback line, um, and it was asked that it be moved. The left. Um. And it was, but one of the conditions of approval was that that level spreader. The orientation of it be tilted twenty degrees to the left, under twenty degrees counterclockwise. Um, with the intent that. Any water coming out of it would be directed more. More, more directly to the, to the rear of the property, towards the river. Um, and it appears that it was not done on the, on the plan, I, I assumed it had been done.
That was done on the final plan, yeah.
Not the one that's on file with the town.
I, I rotated it, I, I know I did that before I, uh. You know, filed the Mylar, in, in John, uh, John checked it. I, I know I.
I have a copy of the mile that's been filed, and it's not rotated.
Uh, I could go find that, if you wanna see the.
It, I mean, it, it certainly appeared from, I mean, Catherine and I met today and I looked at these. It, um, sort of the chronology of. Of plans. And there was, there was one, I believe, from May. From March and then another one in May.
Hmm.
And from what I could tell, it had not been actually rotated.
The one in May was not, no, that's correct, the one in May was not, the one on June third was. The approval was on June third. Um. I mean, I could pull up the old drawing, uh.
If you can, sure.
If you wanna rotate, wanna rotate it more, it's gonna go into the access drive, which doesn't make sense.
What, what, I'm trying to understand the concern about the level spreader, because I think it's just. It's just stones on the ground at this point, is it not?
Right.
And so, Ms. Hutchinson, I'm just trying to understand what the concern is with the level spreader at this point.
Here, the retention pond or the sediment pond and the pipe are being removed.
Yep.
So, there's no need for this, however, in the future, someone coming along is going to say, oh. The Landover Planning and Zoning Commission approved this, uh, plan, trying out. In front of me, uh, showing this level spreader placed here. And so, so, so we're gonna utilize it, so. What can, Mr. Bell, can you simply do what you did with regard to the. Sediment pond and the pipe and simply say it will be removed and then. Or, or, uh, rotate it the twenty degrees, because you can see the swale that showed on here also is directed toward my property.
I can't rotate it anymore, because it's gonna go into the access room, I already rotated it once already. And I don't know what the concern is about the level spread, I mean, we could run it over at the bulltozer and. Really sink it into the ground, and then you'll never see it, and.
I know, hold on just a minute, Chris, I, I understand the issue now, and so, I think. If the, and I, and you can't see my cursor moving, only I can see that, but if you were to ex. It, rotate the bottom. Fifteen degrees so that the, uh, the level spreader. Was shown. Ms. Hutchinson's concern is that the next person comes in, here's that, okay, so that level spreader was good, we're just gonna make it there. And it flows water down to her property. We need to somehow remember, hold, hold on a minute, Chris, we need to, we need to somehow. Make a note. Um. To the file or something, for the next time somebody comes in here. That I think Ms. Hutchinson's concerned, and, and I know she'll hold us to it, is that it go more. I'm gonna say directly north-south compared to this, so that it doesn't flow towards her property at all. And, and if you were to rotate the bottom and extend that pipe in length a little bit. You could do that and not have it access your, your road on there.
What you don't understand is we're taking the pipe out, not rotating.
I do understand that, Ms. Hutchinson's concern is, for the next guy, it's gonna say, planning and zoning approved this picture. We're gonna do exactly that again, and why aren't you gonna approve it this time?
Why don't we just remove?
Saying that the level spread is not approved for future development.
That, that, that might be a solution, we could, uh.
That's just a note.
We, as far as I'm concerned, uh, as I was alluding to, we could remove it from the picture. We, as far as I'm concerned, the guy was alluding to, we could remove it from the picture, because really, all it is is. It's, it's rocks on the, the bottom, it's not functioning as a level spreader, it's gone, and so somebody else would have to come in. And. With a new drawing, um. Not, not look at that at all.
Remove it from the print or remove it from, in the field. Or both.
Both, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see the need to remove in the field, it's just, it's a waste of time and effort, it's just stones on the ground, it's uh. And reconstructing it is a waste of time, I mean, you could just say. Uh, the level spreader is abandoned and can't be reused, I mean, period. And that's, I mean, you have the, a power to say that. You have the power to say that.
And, but simply if you said they exist, in other words, just like you did for the sediment pond and the pipe. That will be removed. And I don't care if it, the dirt, the pilestone stays there, but it's off the map. And somebody can't say, and the same with the swale. And the swale will be removed, and that would keep me happy with regard to that, just take it, just like you did for the other two. Remove them. Take them off the map. By saying. The existing whatever will. Be removed.
Okay, and that would entail filing. A Mylar of the restri, the approved restoration plan, I assume.
I am under, I like, uh, you know, we, we've got a note there, um. If we, if, and this goes back to, you know, a, a final condition plan that. Shows the final conditions. We could have the final conditions plan, not show the detention basin, not show the pipe, not show the level spreader.
Yeah.
And that, that shows how we're down to where we are for our desired end state.
Exactly, just like an asphalt for a house, yeah.
Yep, yep.
And, and the swale too, although I do say this, this particular one, he has said the existing swale shall be filled at the end of the project. Um, so. Yes.
And then after it's all done, he can go out there, s, s, get all of those elevations, take that off the print. Take the pipe out.
Yes, our final picture should not show the pipe or the basin or the level spreader.
Or the swale.
We have to um. Do an asphalt that's required by the approval, I have to do. You know, survey the asphalt of all the elevations to prove that we graded it properly. And that everything is planted, and that, you know, that's, that, during, that's after the fall, after we have everything in. Yeah, we just include that on the asphalt, say that everything is gone.
And I can, I can say that. I have learned a lot by going through this process, and I am confident that when somebody comes in to develop this property. Ms. Hutchinson's gonna be there making sure that we get that level spreader in the right direction.
I would make, I would think they, she would.
Well, then, I agree with um, Scott and the chair, let's. Take it off here, and I would say it, it shall. It shall, um. What, you've already said the existing swale shall be filled, so that. If you simply take off the spreader.
And the pipe.
And, yeah, and the pipe, yeah, and the uh. Well, the pipe says, the pipe and the sediment pond says, and the base.
Yeah.
All, all this grading is gonna be gone, and all these, you know.
No, I got you, Chris.
Grading's gone, and you can have an asphalt plan. That just has elevations on it.
Exactly. So it should look like.
That's it.
It's gonna be one big flat area.
So. Can we put, Chris, a condition of approval? That you will make us a picture. That doesn't have that detention basin, that pipe, or that level spreader on it.
Or the swale.
That's the asphalt.
That's the asphalt.
Yeah, I have to do that anyway.
Or the swale, Mr. Chair, please.
Yeah, but, but we, we as a group are trying to approve a restoration plan, and so. We need to put a condition of approval in there that's gonna end up with those things being done, and uh.
True.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds good to me.
I got it.
Okay, and I, I have a question, if I'm reading that correctly, the existing conveyance. Trench shall be backfilled, that's something different than the swale. And then you say the existing swale shall be filled at the end of the project, that's, I think, no. That, that's. That was okay, because it say it shall be filled at the end of the project, so you're, are you indicating, sir, that, that means that the. Plan that will eventually be filed, excuse me, will not show anything along those lines?
That's correct. The, the conveyance swell has already been filled. That swell that is the end of the level spreader, um, is just barely there. Um. That will be, you know, we'll make sure we uh, level that out, that's only like about six inches deep. Ten feet wider, so it's like it, I don't even think you can find it if you go out there, but we'll make sure that's. Levelled off and great, seeded and everything else, you know.
So that will all be off the.
Gone, yeah.
Final.
Yep.
Planet.
Does, does it say what kind of seed you're gonna put on this?
Uh, that's in the uh, the seeding, I think we had on the detail sheet, um. You know, it's, you know, a, a lot of a rye seed, but. I don't wanna use the same seed mixture somebody used up in here, that there was too much rye, I wanna make sure some fescue gets in and some perennial.
Perennial stuff, yeah.
Absolutely. But we'll make sure of that, because we wanna make sure we get, we get a good crop of grass in there.
Scott, I think I interrupted you, I, I'm sorry. Scott, I think I interrupted you, you wanted to say, you started to say something about the spreader and the swale.
No, I just wanted to talk about, I think it's called conservation mix they put in there.
Correct, yeah. Well, it's. This, we, we're not in a conservation area, I mean, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to make sure we get a good seeding in there, because. The lot is gonna get developed, we just wanna make sure we get a good cover. So we don't get any erosion problems. And it looks good, you know, we want it to look good, too.
Looks good.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Hutchinson?
I just wanted to be sure I'm clear, that with regard to the level spreader. You're going to. As a condition of approval, if it's, gets approved. Do what?
Remove, remove, so we're gonna have a list here, the conditions of approval, the final drawing will not show. The detention pond, the pipe, the level spreader, the swale, the existing conveyance trench.
And Mr. Bell, what is your objection to removing it? The reference to the spreader. As you did with the pipe and the um. Sediment pond as well as the swale.
Because it's benign.
On the sidewalk, I could not even find the level spreader.
You won't find it, it's so heavily covered with growth.
Mr. Chair, you, you sized up very well my concern, if it's shown on the map, somebody's gonna say they approved it, so.
Yep. Um. And we're smarter now, I, you know, I now understand your concern with that thing, and uh. As I say, I know you'll, you'll help remind me if I were to ever forget.
I wouldn't be surprised if I did remind you.
Okay, any other commission members have any other comments?
No. Uh, this is Leanne, I have a, a couple of questions.
Yep, go ahead, Leanne.
Um, just about the use of the term basin, um, when he started his remarks, and then when Mr. Bell started his remarks, he. Called this a basin, and then a few minutes ago you referred to a basin, so. My question is, just because we're just seeing this for the first time, the actual basin. Is not pictured here, correct, I see where it says proposed low point, so Mr. Bell is stipulating that he's gonna do the things that we've. Covered. During his remarks, and that's what he's gonna be evaluated on, but we're not seeing. An actual basin right now, correct?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't call it a basin, I, I guess I was just using my terminology. Maybe to try to help understand it, uh, um, you know, it, it's a, it's a depressed area, you, you know, I'm not making. A detention basin, I'm just making a depressed area, you know, that's, the, the basin that we're all talking about, the sediment basin. That's the one that, you know, the big giant hole in the ground, it's out there now, you know, that's gonna get filled, and that's, that was a designed basin, this is just a depressed area. Maybe that's.
Could be, it could be a swale instead of a.
Well, no, no, because it's not going anywhere, it's not a swale, it's just a low depressed area, you know.
Certainly what I was looking to see.
I, I know you had mentioned that just before we left, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, so I. You know, I, I took that as. After I thought about it, you know, that's probably the best idea, when it comes down to it, because. It, it makes sure I have enough grade to do this with, okay, by making the low points and the high point, so. Um, and, you know, I, I think it answers everybody's concerns.
Anything else, Leanne?
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, so, so we're now calling it a depressed. Area or depressed low area, and that's what's gonna be graded accordingly going forward, correct? Excuse me.
Yes.
And just one other comment, um, Mr. Bell, when you started speaking, you said something about something closer to extramart. Was that just a reference point, as, or is there any other proposed sloping or grading? You know, much, very close to the extramart, other than what you've already discussed?
What's the extramart? I don't remember saying that word. Extramart, what's that?
The gas station next door.
Gas station.
Oh, um, no, the, the water actually, it grades. If you didn't look at the contours, they, they grade towards the auto place in the back. I mean, um. You know, that, that's where the grading goes now. From station, um. One fifty. As it heads towards the back, that's the way it grades now, I, we don't really grade towards. The, the gas station, except for what's there now, I mean, we're gonna meet the grade right at the property line, basically, and we're not gonna disturb the shrubs there. So. We're not grading.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Hearing none, I would like to make a motion to approve the restoration plan as presented. With the condition of approval being that the final picture. Will not show. The existing sediment basin, the pipe, the level spreader, the swale. Or the conveyance trench.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Did, do we need any further language than, again, we are just seeing this today, and it doesn't show the exact measurements. Um, do we need any further language about? How this is gonna be evaluated after Mr. Bell has it completed? Or that he, that, you know, that we know what he's gonna do going forward?
Um.
Because we don't have it on the map exactly.
So, we, we should, good point, Leanne, and we should have, uh. Jim, what kind of? What? Who and how often? Should you and a team, whether, you know, I don't know if anybody, Joe has an interest, Hank has an interest, uh. Or we're all gonna rely on you, but you should be out there. Whether it's weekly or. Give me some other thing to conduct an inspection to make sure that we're getting what we want, and we're not surprised at the end.
Okay. The, the problem with that is I have no idea how long it's gonna take and what, um. If I can get an idea from the, from Chris. The timeframe for the restoration, I'd be happy to set, to, to give you a. How often, a time as to how often it should be, a field inspection, still, field meetings.
According to the, the owner and the contractor, uh, the last time I talked, they, they don't wanna touch this thing probably till mid-September, end of Sept, September, go. Um. And what we're gonna do is get the grading. Done except for the topsoil, because once it's topsoil, you're, you're kinda. You know, kinda married to the grade. And, you know, it's, it's gonna be costly to, to change it, so. I'm going to uh, have it graded minus the topsoil. And, and shoot some grades out there, and make sure, you know, I got what I wanted. And, you know. Jim can come out there and verify that, you know, we're, we get what we want, and then we add the topsoil, it's. You know, it's gonna be great, so that, that was, that's my plan, and I plan on. Watching them do the grade, so, um. You know, I'll probably, it, it's probably only gonna take maybe two or three days to grade this, um, there's not that much to move. Uh. And then, you know, we'll check it, and uh. I'll get back to. Jim and, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at it before we topsoil it and.
Okay, so, let me just throw this out there, just give me forty-eight hours notice.
Yeah.
And um. I could be there on a daily basis, if it's, if it's a three-day project.
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, they're gonna let me know. When they're gonna start, and, you know, I'll, as long as the weather's good, I'm assuming it's gonna only take a few days, and then I'll check it and.
Yeah, that's right, like, and you're gonna have a transit on site.
What's that?
You'll have a transit on site and.
Oh, I got a laser, yeah, I got a laser.
And um. You'll. Shoot grades and, and give me stakes.
Well, I'll shoot grades, I'll try to put a few stakes in if I can, uh. Um. You know, the, the contractor's got a laser, you know, we're, we're gonna meet out there before this starts, so he's gotta understand the plan totally, you know, in person. And uh. We'll, we'll go with that, and um. Soon as I satisfied with how the grade is, I'll give you a call, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, we can do a pre-construction, which would, would certainly be the first day of, first day of work. I understand, I don't wanna take up more time, you know, travel time.
Yeah, you want, you wanna be there for that, I mean, you can be if you wanted, okay.
I think that'd be a good idea, yes.
Yep, okay, we'll do. I imagine, you know, we're gonna be there probably a month from now, I guess, I would, I would say. Won't be any sooner than that, that's for sure. And, you know, we wanna topsoil on so that by the time we hit late September, we've got, you know, a good, uh, grass growing season, we're not dry anymore, we've got some rain coming. And, you know, we got a good chance of uh. Getting some good vegetation, so that, that's what the thought is right now.
So is a map gonna be submitted after tonight showing what was. Outlined verbally during the meeting tonight?
Like what?
Uh, was it dimensions that you talked about for creating this depressed area?
Well, it's a scale, it's, it's a scaled drawing, um.
On the map.
One inch goes fifty feet, I can give you an actual physical copy of it, and you can scale off it, I mean. It's a. The, the locations right now are, you know, plus or minus a couple of feet type of thing. Um. I'm, I'm, you know, the contractor's gonna have a, a plan that he scales off of, well. Probably when we, when we meet him out there, I'll, you know, probably pull a few stakes. Say, you know, this is about where we want elevation ninety-six and the slope from here, and we'll throw some stakes out there, but I don't plan on putting anything more on the plan. You know, we've got the motion.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the asphalt is, is what's required by way of the regulations.
Right.
Okay, as long as that, if, if that's enough for the record.
Well, I'll send this, I'll send this.
The asphalt will be for the record.
Yeah, right now you don't have the plan, I have it, so I can email it right after the meeting.
So. I'm sorry, the, the motion. To approve, are we referencing a specific revision date?
Today's date.
Is there a today's revision, today's date on here?
Fifteen, yep.
Thank you.
Think we have to.
Yeah.
Okay, so. I will make a motion to amend the motion. To include the date of the. Drawing. Is today's date. And to specify that forty-eight hours prior to commencing of grading operations. That uh. Chris Bell will. Notify. Jim. Of the start of the uh, grading. And during the grading. Process. Agent Halcy will conduct daily inspections of the site with Chris Bell.
Oh, not with me, I won't be there on every day. Nope. Nope, I, I can't do that.
Okay, so who will be there? Or, I thought you said you were going to be there throughout the grading period.
Well, I'm going to be there before he starts for a pre-construction meeting and then, uh, it's only going to take like three days to grade it. I, I can't see standing there watching him grade, it's like trying to watch grass grow.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't have the time to do that, Mr. Chairman, I, I can't be there eight hours a day. I'm sorry.
So, so what's, uh, what's your pleasure, Jim, to, uh, you know, participate in the pre restoration conference or and, uh, you know, show it three days later with Chris Bell, or do you want to come over? And I guess nothing stops you from doing it whenever you want in, in between.
Yeah, if, if we nail Chris down for, for two site visits, beginning and end.
Yeah. Okay.
How would that go?
And, uh, so the revised motion will be, uh, to put the date of the drawing in the motion and to specify that 48 hours prior to the pre restoration grading event, you'll let, uh, you'll let Jim know when it is, so he can participate in that, uh, event with you. And, uh, 48 hours prior to your final inspection, you'll let Jim know so he can participate in the final inspection with you.
Okay. And I mean, that'll be an inspection before topsoil. And we get an agreement that, you know, we're, we're good on the grades, then we topsoil it. And then we do the topography plan. Um, and, and get a, a final asphalt.
Yep.
That we can send it.
And again, nothing prevents Jim from going over there to do extra checks, uh, but we'll get those two checks in there. In addition, I guess, uh, and add that, uh, Chris Bell and, and Jim will do an inspection at, at final completion.
Yeah. And of course, if Jim runs into a problem, you know, of course, I'll, I'll come out there ASAP, I just, I just can't stay.
Chris, I'm, I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing a, a pre-construction and then you would look at it before the topsoil.
Correct, with, with you, yeah.
Okay, so that's two.
Yeah.
So there would be no final.
No, there's going to be a final, when all said and done, I want you and Chris to be over there looking at it.
Oh, after, after it's all topsoil, yeah, well.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure that we're up to three now, right?
Yep.
Well, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I'll do as good as we need.
Pre-construction, um, prior, okay. Pre-construction prior to topsoil and post-construction.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And thankfully, uh, we've got that all recorded, so I'm sure that, uh, motion will get coming out correctly. I'm looking for a second to that amendment to the motion.
Second, Jed.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the amendment. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the amendment passes 5-0-0. Now, any discussion on the motion that includes both removing those five items from the final picture as well as the different inspections that we want to have done? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Ian?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes 5-0-0. Thank you, Catherine Hutchinson, for your input, thank you for your flexibility, Chris Bell.
Thank you, commissioners, appreciate your time.
And I think we've got a good restoration plan and it shows the importance of understanding the concern so we can properly address them. And thank you, Hank, for staying with us. Maybe he didn't.
He didn't.
Welcome.
I thank you again for inviting me to speak.
Oh, you're welcome. Looking for my agenda here. Oh, what happened there? Okay, you need to stop sharing your screen, Chris.
Um, okay, thank you.
There we go.
I was looking for the button. All right, good night.
Next item up is a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission to hand over Board of Selectmen to opt out of section three of of Public Act 21-29 of the Connecticut General Assembly. Um, I'm not sure, I, I spent some time with, uh, with trying to get the, uh, understanding the, you know, what are sections, what are subsections, so, uh, the motion will not include that verbiage because I couldn't convince myself that it was right. But that's the next item up, and, and why are we voting on this again? So, uh, the, uh, the process for opting out of the Public Act said the notice had to be put in the paper within 15 days prior to us voting to opt out or take that recommendation. It really, you would think that the, uh, recommendation would go in, or the notice would go in the paper after the Board of Selectmen acted on it, but that's not the way it's listed in the Public Act, and so to prevent anybody from saying our last vote didn't count because we didn't notice it, I wanted to vote again tonight. And Jim is, uh, standing by to get the notice out right away this time because that's the sequence that is listed in the Public Act to, um, to go through the opt-out process. And so we, we had talked, uh, you know, essentially, the, the purpose of the opting out is the, the Public Act requires a person, a homeowner, any homeowner, to have as a right the ability to put an accessory dwelling unit. Some of the, uh, lots in Lake District are very small, less than, you know, like, an eighth of an acre. And, uh, putting an accessory apartment on there is not conducive to maintaining the water quality of Andover Lake. So there was a lot of good stuff in the Public Act to do with the accessory dwelling units. But I, I did not think it right that we allow the people in those small lake lots to uh, be able to put as a right accessory dwelling unit there. Uh, our current regulations require a three-acre lot in the Lake District to put an accessory dwelling unit. So we do have, uh, ability to do that. But not for, not for everybody. And that doesn't mean we won't change our regulations later to incorporate some of those good things. If we do not opt out by the end of this year, all those rules in the Public Act go into effect. Uh, and we have no choice, so. That's, that's why we are opting out, that's consistent with what, uh, our attorney, Mark Branch recommends. And that's consistent with our, uh, affordable housing plan. So I will make a motion to opt out of Public Act 21-29 accessory dwelling unit requirements because the specified right to put an accessory dwelling unit on every building lot is detrimental to the water quality of Andover Lake.
Second.
Thank you, Leanne. And, and Kevin, uh, if you got enough that you feel comfortable based on that little discussion and want to vote, you can, if you don't want to vote, you can abstain, um, but it's, it's really, uh, you know, a pretty simple rationale that we're going through that, so we have, we have a motion, it's seconded any other discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, the motion passes 5-0-0. Okay. The, uh, discussion. And this is where I promised Leanne we could discuss the speed limit, uh, associated with the, the area in front of, uh, the Dollar General.
Yes. Um, as you know, we've talked about it for the last few months. Um, the 40 mile an hour speed limit through town currently starts around Shoddy Mill Road and ends between shortly just after Bunker Hill Road going toward the Dollar General site. So, we had agreed that it was probably advisable to see if we could get an extension of that 40 mile an hour zone from the state down through the, you know, possibly the Lake Road intersection or sh- very shortly after that. Um, and I think I had asked you, Jed, and you said, um, I think it's in the minutes that it was agreed to. Um, but I think the last time I asked you, Jed, you said you wanted to see if there was any mention of it already by the state themselves in the report that they turned in about the, the curb cut there?
Yes.
Under six?
I was interested, uh, and, and I thought we probably, uh, gave the action to find that report to, uh, Agent Halcy, I don't know.
I did not recall that, I, I'm recalling it now that you mentioned it. I'd be happy to, um, take a look at that.
Is it finished, is it available to read and we just haven't read it yet, or is it not?
No, it was part of the, it's part of the, the application process for the Dollar General store.
But, but we have not seen it yet, Leanne, I have, I have not seen any such report.
The final, okay.
Okay, that's what I was getting at also, because I thought, based on your answer, Jed, that you wanted to see if they'd already brought it up.
That's correct, yep.
So, Jim, if you have access to that right away, can you read it and send it to us, and then I guess the next step would be to approach the Selectmen?
Yeah, I think we're talking about two different things, I'm sorry. It's a traffic study and then there was comments made by DOT. So I guess I would need both.
Um, well, we know that nothing about the speed limit was mentioned in the traffic study.
Aye.
So, what we, what I was hoping was the state would recognize the need to reduce the speed limit. And that would be one of the comments that they would make to the traffic study that said, and oh, by the way, we're going to reduce the speed limit until after we get past the intersection with Lake Road headed east.
I'll follow up on that.
Right.
And I do think, uh, if, you know, if, and I don't do much Facebook, but my wife clues me in on all the things going on with the town and, uh, certainly there is a lot of interest in the town on the traffic out there with, in the vicinity of the Dollar General and, uh, and after the last accident, uh, you know, the Facebook comments were just running crazy.
I wonder if we have the name of that woman from the, the, the traffic study, if we could call her and ask her.
Now, I think Jim, I think Jim has a point of contact at the, uh, you know, the engineering firm.
Yeah, I'd call BL, that.
And, and we should just go to BL and, uh, and ask him for it. But, but we do have the person's names, Scott, in, in, in one of our, uh, meeting minutes, the attendees, where her name is in the, uh, one where she briefed the traffic study. And again, there was a lot of, uh, a lot of questions in, uh, on Facebook that, that talked about the, uh, the engineering firm doing the traffic study, coming up with all these, uh, bum numbers for accidents and that. And they didn't come up with those numbers, the, the numbers of accidents are, are from the state. So, uh, you know, if there's any discouragement with, uh, you know, the, the number of accidents seeming low, which it did, the, the state provided, uh, BL the, the numbers there, that wasn't something that they did, they just took it right from the state, uh, statistics.
So I guess I don't mind, I guess I'm just is contacting the person who did the traffic study like an extra step in addition to the DOT report?
No, I think the person who did the traffic study should be able to give us the DOT comments. Oh, but I, yeah, I don't know how to get hold of the DOT and ask them for the comments on it. Maybe Jim does.
Anybody, Jim, do you have a copy of the DOT comments?
And it's on our website.
DOT comments?
I found it on the website under archived applications.
You're looking at our website, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the DOT comment letter dated 12/29/21.
Okay. So it's just a matter of reading that, because I haven't read it since then, I didn't realize it was there. And if so, if it does address this or not. I'm guessing it doesn't, but I don't know that.
Yeah. That, that was a preliminary thing, uh, you know, they, they said they had questions on the plan. I don't know what feedback BL gave back to the DOT and, and what the DOT finally, uh, concluded, but that was a preliminary letter and it did not mention reducing the, the, uh, speed limit.
I will follow up, make sure that we have everything that was all comments, all DOT comments.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
I guess, I was, I guess I was under the impression that there was a separate report from DOT that was coming in about the curb cut across from extramart, and obviously they proceeded anyway. But I thought during the public hearing process that that hadn't come back yet to Dollar General, so that's, Jed, that's what I thought you were referencing that maybe we should check to see if they already brought it up on their own, they may in the state.
Yeah, yes.
I, I do have some, I do have some correspondence from DOT on that, um, they came up with a, a, a comment which is vague at best, um, and, but it subsequent approved, they subsequently approved it.
Okay, so it sounds like, uh, you know, with that, uh, Jim can look to see if there's anything out there that addresses that, but it sounds like the next step will be that I guess I, I will talk to Eric and find out the right venue for us to approach the Board of Selectmen with, uh, you know, a recommendation to go to the DOT or get their permission for us to go to the DOT, that might be, uh, I'll, I'll talk to Eric before the next meeting, find out what the, uh, with the pathway is.
Okay, hopefully it's something simple and just in the form of a request from us and just mentioning the things that we mentioned tonight about, you know, we don't see a mention of it yet, there's public concern expressed during the public hearing process, so that part's a matter of record. In addition to the other comments like Jed, that you mentioned that your wife has come across um, and things like that, so hopefully it's just a matter of a simple letter. Um, hopefully in time, possibly in time for their September meeting, and then it's just a matter of somebody finding a contact person, maybe Eric knows who that is.
Right. Okay, well, we've had a, a long meeting here, I gotta do a quick break. I will be back in two minutes and we will continue on with the next thing is going to be approval of that from the last meeting. So, do your best to review that in the next minute or two.
If you're looking for the minutes of the, the August 3rd meeting, you don't have them. Um, I had put them together and, and was able to access my computer. computer to print them out or post them. I'm, hopefully was just going to defer to the next meeting. Have those take addressed at the next meeting. That would be okay.
I guess so.
Okay, I see Anne maybe took a quick break for something there too. Anne, are you there? I saw your little box light up like you might be close by. Well, okay. Understand Anne is not with us right this minute. I, I am still going to, at this point, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
By twentieth, I think it says. I think that's, that was, um, that's an error, I believe.
Is that an error? Okay.
The, the eighteenth, I believe the twentieth was the ZB meeting. I just, so the eighteenth is right.
So. My, my copy said the eighteenth on it.
Yep. Yeah, I'll go with that.
Yeah, July eighteenth is the right date.
Eighteenth is the right date.
And, uh, I had no comments on the minutes. Anybody else have any comments? Hearing none. I will call for a vote. Scott?
I.
Leanne?
Hi.
Kevin?
I.
I vote I as well. We'll put Anne down for an abstention.
Yeah, I'm here.
Here she is.
Sorry.
No, we were, we were voting on the approval of the minutes, Anne.
Okay.
We had no, okay. And I vote I as well. So the motion carries five zero zero. Is, I think Jim was mentioning before the special meeting minutes of August third are not out yet, so we will vote on those at the next meeting.
Okay.
Under correspondence, I, is, is you heard Carol Barton mention at the start, she, uh, she has sent a letter to me requesting that we think again about the fifteen foot requirement, which is in a sense, is essentially the, the width of most right aways. Our actual regulation says that signs won't be put in the town right of way or fifteen foot from, uh, the, the lot lines on either side. So I said that's generally fifteen feet. That's based on, uh, we've got a town ordinance that was approved in nineteen fifty-three that said roads will be, the, the right of way will be at least fifty feet wide with the road being twenty feet wide. So that gives us thirty feet for right of way, which is fifteen feet on each side. So that was my basis for making that comment. Our attorney is currently on vacation. I would like to just, you know, before I have a discussion on that with him, make sure that, uh, that we're right on that. How, how does the commission feel in general about not, you know, Carol Barton's concern was she's got, uh, you know, some, some bushes, uh, maybe that are twelve feet back from the road. So if she were to put it at the fifteen foot part, it would be on the other side of the bush. And, and that might be unfair. Any other commission members have any thoughts on that?
My thought is that if it does not block the view of the driver or pedestrian, then the sign could be a little bit closer in those cases where there's bushes prohibiting it otherwise. You know, if it's, they put them in front of their bushes instead of in the bushes, then as long as you can see, you can see when you're driving and see when you're walking and the drivers can see the people walking. It's okay with me.
The, uh, any other thoughts?
I, I do understand what Anne is saying. The only tricky thing is to put it into regulation. I feel like you have to make it quantifiable. You can't just say as long as you can see because everyone's definition is different.
I know. That is a difficult.
And after, after I, you know, got that letter and started thinking about that letter, you know, as I walked around the neighborhood here, there are some people that have bushes right up against the road. How would they put out an election sign? There are some houses that have a guard rail where the property drops off right after you get around the road. And, and so I, there are a couple of issues that that I want to discuss with Attorney Brants before bringing it back to the commission to see if there's anything we want to do. But I recognize what Kevin just said, because I tried to come up with some words that I thought would be fair to everybody, is her letter said. And there are some people, it, it just isn't going to be fair. And I also think that if putting up an election sign is important to you, you've, you've got the right to make a choice. You can choose to have a bush there that prevents you from putting the sign, or you can remove the bush, put the sign and complies with that. That's, that's one option. The other thing that, that I really, you know, wasn't keen on and you know, one of her points is that we, we allow signs to be up for supporting the teachers, for painters, roofers, all that side of stuff. Well, we really don't. You know, the regulation says no signs in the right of way. Doesn't say it, no signs except roofer signs. And so the fact that we're not currently enforcing signs is a different issue than what our regulations allow. The other thing I was thinking was that I think there's some political signs that I don't want. I don't think should be on town property. And if we allow any signs on town property, we have to allow election sign or political signs on town property. And, and I didn't think too much of that. So there's a couple subtleties I just want to go through with Attorney Brants. But, but those were my thoughts as I reconsidered it and at the next meeting, we'll give an opportunity that, you know, I'll have some more info on something, a, a little technical issue. I want to make sure we're, we're clean on, but, but those are, are my thoughts. And certainly if everybody thinks that we should be putting signs out to, to the road, I guess we can, we can put that in there, but, you know, we'd have to regulate the size and, and the sightlines and all that kind of stuff. And then enforcement's even harder to get there. So that's where we're at on that. Um, more to follow next week, but I obviously did not do a very good job of explaining myself at the public hearing on the side regs because they're asking for the same thing over again. And, and that's okay. Administrative reports.
Enforcement actions. Um, I have a light ordinance out, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, the letter went out to property on Long Hill Road. I apologize. I forget the street, the, the number regarding junk. I indicated I would follow up at twelfth Center Street and I have not, um, to get them a, an actual citation out tomorrow. I just apologize. I, I just got a little backed up. I've been working with Steve Barnett on Route Six. Um, he has been make, made some progress cleaning up and trying to stand on top of him. There's a number of other complaints that are pending that I've been working on as far as contacting the owner. Pretty much it.
Okay, and, and everybody should have got the little email thing I sent out from the letter to the editor from the River East on, on trying to address a similar situation over in Marlboro. And, uh, I've got other examples from other towns where, where none of those enforcement things are easy. Do you have anything on home occupations, Jim?
Yeah, I, I just, we've had a few applications for home occupations of late, um, that are handled administratively and they, they are civically filled out very clearly in the regs or clearly, um, when that's allowed. What we don't have is, is really a database of, of those, those applications that have been approved over the years. Um, and I don't know, so I'm not sure how, how I would go about doing that. But I'm going to at least try moving forward to, to to have that database so that we can notify folks to renew the, renew their permit, actually put together an actual application for a permit. Because I don't believe there was one. And it calls for, there's a fee, which is, it's nice, but also it's an opportunity to go take a look at, at, I mean, I mean, very often home occupations start out benign and, and sometimes they, they grow and it's, that's the way to keep, keep track of them. I mean, basically you go out and do an inspection on an annual basis. An inspection could be a drive-by. If you know, you don't see anything, there's no issue. So I'm just working on that. And the problem is there's, the minutes don't reflect or permitted. I can pull out the home occupations that received special permits, if there's any follow-up on there. But the administrative ones, I mean, there's simply no way that I'm aware of to get that information. So I'll, I'll make a point, maintain that moving forward and if some ones that have some occupations, home occupations that have been approved in the past, light, I'll just add them to that database. And that's, that's all I have on that.
Okay, now I would have assumed that any application for a home occupation would have come to the commission, but I hadn't really thought about it. I just made that assumption kind of like accessory apartments. You know, there's some that can almost be an administrative approval, but they all come to the commission at this point. Might want to change that. But it wasn't anything that I'd ever, ever thought about. And I know I haven't heard anything about uh, home occupation things. So I guess consistent with what they do in wetlands, whenever there's an administrative uh, action by you, Jim, you should be briefing the commission on it just so we can, we're aware and we can have some dialogue on, on how that's going. And that's what we do over there on, uh, you know, Agent Wagner can approve things that are in the upland review area without the commission approval and, but he briefs us on what's going on. The, uh, nothing for the inland wetlands layers on at this point. Just a heads up, I was going to talk about the annual report tonight. I'm not going to because it's a little late. Uh, we'll talk about that next time. I still haven't had any, any request for one. The thing that, that I am thinking about being more vocal on, you look, you, you write down and it looks like we did a lot of good stuff. The thing that that report does not show is that whether it's the affordable housing plan, the next plan of conservation and development, um, all the changes to regulations that are required by Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine. In the review by, uh, by our attorney, there is a real backlog of work that I am not getting done to bring to the commission to talk about. And certainly some of the, some of the solution to that might be the town planner. That's the only solution that I can think of to that backlog. Uh, but I think we're not doing the town a favor by not highlighting that issue that's coming up. So anyhow, I'm working on, on how to put a little bit of bad news in there. It looks like all the public members are gone, so we've got no public speak. Next regularly scheduled meeting, September nineteenth. Any other questions or comments for any commission members before we head for adjournment?
Jim Halussy?
Yes.
Did you, um, ever talk to the people at the top of Long Hill about adding a dumpster up there?
Yes. Yep, and I, I am, I've contacted them a number of times and I'm going to follow up with a, actually what I'm, what I'm going to send out is a, is a citation for light along with the dumpster, the, the, the direction to provide a dumpster. And the reason I'm doing that is the dumpster ordinance doesn't, as far as I can tell, doesn't have a lot of light, whereas the light citation does. Um, so I was going to mention it as an aside. And now tell him that. And not tell him that recently, you know, the, the citation will say that, you know, clean it up by such and such a date. Or, you know, a fine will be imposed, you know, twenty-five dollars a day or whatever it is. Also, you know, and as an aside, kind of mentioned the fact that he should have a dumpster on site. The ability to, to find on that basis, yes. He, he was very cooperative in the beginning and, and I kind of lost. I reached out to him and didn't hear back from a week ago or so. We're talking about down near Bear Swamp, right? We're, you're section of Bear Swamp in.
Right.
Yeah, there's another one on Long Hill. Addition that I have to pursue to that. Public, up into the elements, out set back from the road. On the roof. In that way for years, I believe. It's not particularly visible, so. I haven't made it a priority, but. I have it on my list.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to thank everybody for hanging in there tonight. It was a little. Difficult. Jim was doing a couple of things that he was not used to doing tonight. You know, whether it's. Working on the minutes, trying to share the screens, hosting the thing and, in addition to doing his normal duties there and. But I think we got through a lot of good stuff. I was particularly pleased with how the. The gravel pit thing seems to be winding up. I thought that was a pretty good solution and. But there's some things that certainly are going to require some homework on our point, our parts, which is like that Rosewood Acres thing, you know, when you. You know, I, I am not familiar and I'm sure nobody else is on the mixed use regs that we've got there. So anyhow, I really appreciate you guys sticking in there. I don't like going over three hours, but we did so. In an effort to not make it any longer, I make, I move that we adjourn.
A second.
Second it.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? Hearing none? Anne?
Aye.
Scott, aye, I see. Kevin?
Aye.
Leanne? Leanne, I can't see or hear you. I guess Leanne will abstain. I vote aye as well. Motion carries four zero one with Leanne abstaining. Thank you all so much and good night.
Night.
Good night.
Thank you.